Kemper.
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
Vitale?
Yes.
Weaver absent. Pelikas?
Yes.
Your Honor, you have one absent. You have eight yeses on all except no's on five C and five D.
Okay, and that motion carries. Now, onto the regular agenda. Item six, and I believe we need to have a motion to allow Counselor Henry to recuse herself. Is that correct?
Oh, yes.
That is correct.
So would someone make that motion?
I will if you want.
Counselor Shumway?
I would move that Councilman Vicki Henry be recused. Counsel person, Vicki Henry be recused from participating on item number six on the regular agenda.
Second. Second by Counselor Hanson. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you. Now, on to item six, which will be Counselor Pierce.
Okay, this is a resolution number 2014-25 pertaining to our application with the Wyoming Business Council for the Western Research Institute. So I move to approve the resolution 2014-25 supporting the loan component of the business-ready community business committed application to the Wyoming Business Council for Wyoming Research Institute, WRI, and affirming contractual obligations regarding to overruns in project costs, operations, and maintenance.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion, a second by Counselor Kemper. City staff.
Mayor and Council, this may seem familiar to you because just a few weeks ago, you authorized Resolution 2014-13, which effectively said exactly what the resolution in front of you tonight says. I've stated in the cover sheet that this is largely a housekeeping item. The Business Council, in reviewing our grant application, met with staff on April 1st, as well as members of, or representatives of WRI and LEDC, and they conveyed to us that their rules now require a separate resolution for loans. They also asked that, in addition to bringing forward the separate resolution to memorialize the loan component of the project, that we also, in that resolution, acknowledge that cost overruns must be approved by joint agreement of the city, WRI, and the Business Council, and that the city will incur and have, over the long term, all of the typical responsibilities of any building owner, and also be certain that we were clear as to the responsibilities of WRI as a long-term 20-year tenant potentially in that building. So that's what this resolution does. It just clears up matters for the Business Council, brings us into compliance with their rules, and allows them to proceed forward with processing the grant application. We expect that their board will meet on May 29th to review and give a decision of award, hopefully, for the $3 million grant and the $3.6 million loan for this project. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just on the budget sheet, first, on the first page, of course, it says the loan is $3,619 and some thousand, and in the budget sheet, it says $3,589,000. Just, I don't know how that discrepancy comes about, what, which one? I presume the five is correct, three-five, but where the other one came from, I just don't know.
Mayor and Council, as I review this, it appears that the loan on the project, as stated in the revenue section of $3.58 million, is just a typo. The correct number is $3.6, $3,619,184, as stated on the cover sheet, and as stated in the resolution itself.
Well, then, the addition doesn't follow. Let me just follow up on this. Because in the, in the revenue sheet, it says three-five, and I also noticed that, of course, the total listed there is 8.5 million, which, of course, includes the $300,000 grant, which is also not mentioned on the budget sheet. So I think the budget sheet probably needs to just be clarified and redone in some fashion with those two changes, you know, add the 300, three-
Three million.
Three million. Oh, it's, what's, you've got one million, you've got three million. And add the figure of 3.6 million there.
Right. Mayor and Council, I think what's happened is, in this cover sheet section, there's another row that lists grant revenue, and it looks like it's not showing here, but if you add the 3 million in grant, the 3.6 in loan, and the $200,000 contribution from the business, you'd arrive at that $8 million number. I think it's missing a row, as I look at it.
Okay.
But the 8.5 would be the 3 million, the 3.5, and the 2 million. They come up to 8, 8 point whatever.
Sure. Yeah.
But I know that these figures, I can't keep track of them. It's too large for my brain.
All right. Any other questions from Council? Any comments from Council? Would anyone from the public like to speak on this issue? City clerk, roll call, please.
Pierce?
Yes.
Kemper?
Yes.
Henry, recused. Hanson?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
Vitale?
Yes.
Weaver absent. Pelikas?
Yes.
One recused, one absent, seven yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you. The motion carries, and we'll wait just a minute for Counselor Henry to come back in All right. Item number seven, Counselor Hanson.
I would like to move, Your Honor, that, to award the bid for the Canby-Harney Alley Improvement Project to Simon Contractors, Inc., of Cheyenne, Wyoming, in the amount of $688,781.92, plus a contingency of $68,878.19, for a total amount not to exceed $757,660.11, to approve and amend the budget, and approve the contract, therefore, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Vitale. Director Smith.
Your Honor, the mayor, members of council, we ask that you award the bid for the Canby-Harney Alley Improvement Project to Simon Contractors. The scope of the project is to replace the water and sewer lines in the alley between Canby and Harney from Ninth Street to the 1300 block. That is roughly 1,400 lineal feet of water and sewer line replacement. This project was advertised and bid according to the city's purchasing policies. The bids were opened on March 25th. The city received two qualified bids, those being from Simon Contractors, Inc., and Mechanical Systems Incorporated. To summarize the revenue for this project, there's $39,976 allocated in water funds. There is $315,000 allocated in the wastewater fund. There is also $330,024 in SLIB consensus money allocated to this project. Therefore, the total funding allocated thus far is $685,000. So obviously, the project is $3781.92 over that budget amount, plus contingency. So the, to summarize the total expenditures, $757,660.11 is the total expenditure request. There is $685,000 in the budget. So the additional appropriation requested of council is $39,846.80 from the water fund, $32,813.31 from the wastewater fund. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Counselor Vitale.
Just a clarification. On the front page, under the contingencies, you list water, $37,000-plus, and wastewater, $31,000-plus. But on the budget sheets at the bottom, in addition, and this is a clarification, there's a contingency of $68,000, 10 percent of the total. But on the bottom, additional amount requested, $39,846.80 in the water fund, and $32,813.31 in the wastewater fund. How are those two figures related to the $37,770 and the $31,107? Are they in addition to this contingency?
Yeah.
Or part of the contingency?
Yes.
Because they don't add up.
Your Honor, the-
They're outside of it.
Director Smith.
Your Honor, Councilmember Vitale, those are included as part of the contingency. In fact, they make up almost the entire contingency amount. Those two figures were arrived at based on a proportional analysis of the actual bids themselves. So that amounts to, what, roughly $72,000 in additional funding, which is the 10 percent contingency, plus the $3781 that the base bid is over the allocated budget.
Well, because you have a contingency of $68,000, and it's gone to 72, so I'm, I'm like Councilman Hanson, all these figures, I get confused, too. I didn't go past the fifth grade.
Your Honor, if-
I don't think, you know, they, they just, if they're outside of the contingency of the 68, then that's another $72,000 added to the budget, and coming from there. But if they are the contingency, then the contingency should be changed to that $72,000 and some, I think. I'm not sure which figures were included.
Can you help, help out? Counselor Vitale, Director Smith.
Your Honor, and Councilmember Vitale, the, those two amounts, the $39,846.80 plus the $32,813.31 combined, add up to the amount of the contingency, plus the $3781 the project base bid is over the original allocation. So it's, it's essentially the 10 percent contingency, plus the $3781 that the base bid is over what is in the budget.
Okay, well, I didn't see the $3,700.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Director Smith? Counselor Pierce.
So we're looking at a project that has a cost of roughly $700,000, and a bid that came in pretty darn close to our actual budgeted amount, conveniently. And then our next closest bid is roughly $240,000 more. So not having read that bid that were the 920, I can't even talk, the, the higher bid, what's the difference? I mean, what do you see, or what are your, do you have concerns with one bid coming in so much different than the other?
Your Honor, the mayor, Councilmember Pierce, we're, we're not extremely concerned, no, because the, the base bid, as you noted, is very close to the, the budget and the original cost estimate. Given the conditions in that alley, it's very tight and very constrained. My opinion is Mechanical Systems put a conservative bid forward such that they felt comfortable, if they were to be the low bidder, that they covered their costs and, and sort of the, the headache factor, if you will, working in that confined space. So, and I, I will note that this project was actually bid for construction last summer, and we received zero bids. So we were happy to receive two bids, especially a bid that was almost exactly on the budget.
Right. Okay. That's all.
Any comments by Council? Anyone from the public wish to speak to this? Yes, Mr. Hale.
Tim Hale, I'm not certain if there should be any cost sharing, and I think my question will, you know, perhaps predicate whether or not there should be. But as you know, the university is just essentially south of this area, and is expanding northward. And as I recall, there's been some concern about the expansion of the university northward in respect to the sewer capacity. And my question is regarding this Canby Alley, does the university in any way benefit from this, you know, new sewer system? Are they hooked up directly, indirectly? Should there be some cost sharing if they are? What exactly is the relationship with this proposed sewer system, and how it would affect the growth just south of it? Thank you.
Thank you. Director Smith, would you like to, is there any, any relationship between the university projects and this?
Your Honor, the mayor, members of council, no, there isn't a direct correlation with the university. None of the university proper, property itself drains through this system. If you can visualize where the university is, it's basically south of Lewis Street. Canby and Harney is, is further north, and it's actually at a higher elevation. So this, this system that we're replacing services essentially the homes immediately adjacent to that, and, and does not benefit the university.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? City clerk, roll call, please.
Hanson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Kemper?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
Vitale?
Yes.
Weaver absent. Pelikas?
Yes.
One absent, eight yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you. The item passes. Item number eight, Counselor Henry.
Yes. I move to approve change orders four X and two S to the construction contract with Simon Contractors for the special purpose tax Phase Two, Schedule Six project, Cedar Street Improvements, in the total amount of $44,849.11. Authorize a budget revision, therefore, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
Thank you. And there's a second by Counselor Somerville. City staff, which would be Director Smith again.
Your Honor, the mayor, members of council, as you know, the projects associated with the special purpose tax were initiated in 2010 after the passage of the SBT election. The SBT Phase Two Bid Schedule Six project, which is also known as the Cedar Street project, was designed, therefore designed, to replace the water and sewer lines in Cedar between Curtis and Harney, as well as completely reconstruct the roadway through that section. So the construction contract was awarded by City Council to Simon Contractors on August 7th of 2012. Construction commenced shortly thereafter. The original contract total was for the amount of $1,880,72.29, plus a contingency in the amount of $188,700, for a total amount not to exceed $2,687,029.29. And in the table that I presented there, you can see how the costs were allocated between the water, the sanitary sewer, and the street components of that project. During the course of the construction of the improvement, some adjustments were made to the scope of work, resulting in the use of $17,426.17 of the original contingency for sewer improvements, leaving a little over $50,000 in the contingency item. Additionally, almost $20,000 of the contingency for the street improvements were also utilized during the course of the construction of the project, leaving, again, just over $50,000 available in the contingency item for that project. And I'll just note that there were no changes in the water system that affected this particular item here. So before you is change order four X for the sanitary sewer, that totals $84,000, and change order two dash S, which is $61,016.36, and that is for the street portion. And the details of those two change orders are provided in the documentation attached to the staff report. But to summarize, the sanitary sewer change order resulted in the need for de-watering the sanitary sewer trench during construction. As you can imagine, the groundwater is relatively high in that area. It's fairly close to the river. So what they were doing, based on the potential of contaminated groundwater, they were pumping it out of the ground into what called frac tanks, sort of, associated with the oil and gas industry. So that resulted in a, in that change order for the sanitary sewer. Additionally, for the street portion, there was some storm sewer improvements provided late in the project that weren't a part of the original contract. So that's, in summary, the nature of the two change orders. So in a, in a nutshell, what we're asking council to do is approve the two change orders, along with the additional amount of funding for sanitary sewer and street. So the additional funding necessary to complete the sanitary sewer change order would be $33,955.17, and that would come out of the sanitary sewer reserves. And we are also requesting $10,893.84 to complete the street change order, and those would come out of project funds that weren't previously allocated by the City Council when the project was originally awarded back in 2012. So I know that's probably somewhat confusing, and I certainly tried to organize the staff report such that it was clear on what we were trying to accomplish, but it, it comes down to basically a change of just under $45,000 to cover expenses and finalize the project. So I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Counselor Vitale?
Yeah, just an explanation again. This project had $188,000 in contingency, right? It's $1.8 million originally.
That is correct.
Okay. Now, and adding up on the second page, all the different budget scenarios here, looking at all the change orders, that comes to approximately $182,000, which would leave about $6,000 of that contingency money. Is this 44,849 in addition to the $188,000 contingency?
Yeah. Director Smith.
Your Honor, the mayor, and, and let, let me clarify that the water contingency is not included in those figures, because that's a separate item, and none of these change orders were a portion that were allocated to the water fund. So you can't utilize that funding to cover the sanitary sewer expense or the street expense. You have to use those funds that are specific to sanitary sewer and the streets. So to, to answer your question, that $44,849.11 is additional contingency that is split between the sanitary sewer fund and the street fund, which is over and above the original contingency approved by council in August of 2012 as part of the original contract.
So the $188,000 contingency is over the base estimate to do the project, in addition to $45,000 on top of that.
Yes, that is correct.
So we're saying that project, basically, it's over 230-some thousand dollars over the original estimate, when you add all the contingencies.
Director Smith?
Your Honor, the mayor and Councilmember Vitale, that is correct. If you add, take the original contingency of 188,000, and you add roughly 45,000 to it, that is the amount of money that is essentially over what was originally approved. What I don't show here is the amount that we're under on the water fund, so it would technically be something less than that. I just don't have that figure in front of me.
Well, that would help. What is de-water, the sanitary sewer trench?
Your Honor, the mayor, Councilmember Vitale, that's where you, you actually put a pump in the trench, and you pump the groundwater out of the trench, so that you're essentially dropping the water table in the immediate vicinity of the construction.
And so the change order for that sanitary sewer, I don't, was pretty significant to bail the water out of there, I guess. Thirty, over $33,000, you had 50. Well, I, I don't know. It's, seems like a whole lot of money that wasn't anticipated in the original contract, but I imagine it's already spent, project done. Can't go put the water back in the trench, get the money back, but, okay.
Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, Your Honor. My question is somewhat similar. Contingencies, of course, always address unexpected problems, and here we have run over, by even over the contingency. There is an interesting letter here, I think by Simon Contractors in there, about, you know, pumping out the, the, whatever, the trench. And the crew arrives, and it wasn't done, and so they couldn't do their work, and, of course, Simon Contractors says they feel they ought to be billed for, for this to the tune of $1,436. In, in the whole scheme of things, that's a relatively small amount, but still, you know, what, what concerns me is that, you know, when all is said and done, when it's really not the city's or whatever fault, we got left holding the bag here. And, and this concerns me in some ways. I'm always very much in favor of manager at risk, because that way, you know, the person who, or the company or whatever that contracts this thing, they are responsible until it's done, you know? But here, it, it really strikes me, very similar to the observation that Counselor Vitale made, that the overrun is considerable. And when all is said and done, the citizens have to foot the bill. And some of it seems to be not quite the fault of the city, in some ways, this cost overrun. And I just wanted to point that out. I will vote for this. I mean, we have no choice, but I think we got to learn to be a little more judicious about these things.
Thank you.
Anything else from council? Would anyone from the public wish to speak to this item? City, Counselor Henry?
I did have a comment. I'm sorry. I just wanted to thank the city manager for reacting, to, reacting favorably to the Westside Neighborhood's request to get that pooled water out of there. And I realized that that was one of the, they changed some of the scope of the work because they had to fix that pooling, so we really appreciate that.
Mayor and Council, thank you. Counselor Henry, and that was a large part of the issue here, was rectifying that, that issue where this bathtub was sort of created inadvertently in the middle of the street, which is not where we like to have bathtubs. But I want to acknowledge Director Smith, you know, he came on board in July, and this issue of the water pooling in the street surfaced, and he, with my request, followed up on this and, and made that correction. So it's really his work.
Thank you. City clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Henry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kemper?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Saville?
Somerville? Yes.
Vitale?
Yes.
Weaver absent. Pelikas?
Yes.
One absent, eight yeses, Your Honor. And so in 2009, when we realized that that building would not be able to take tenancy and hopefully ultimately ownership, that was the goal of the building, we entered into, with LEDC, the co-property owner, a memorandum of understanding for how we would jointly manage that facility, how we would lease that facility to businesses who met the original economic development intent under which we sought the grant funds. As you know, we've had good success using that building, which is the Laramie Technology Building, since 2009 to market the community, frankly. And Mr. Furphy is here, the CEO of Laramie Economic Development Corporation, and may want to discuss with you how that building's been successfully used to get businesses to come and look at our community. It's pretty powerful to be able to say you have, you know, 17,000 square feet of Class A office space, and it will get people to come here that might not otherwise have done so. As you know, we also leased space in the building for the past three years to Happy Jack Software. That was a business that spun out of the incubator and just ended their tenancy in the building in January. We like to believe that our ability to give them a slight discount in exchange for job creation helped them to be successful. And just incidentally, I don't know if you have all had an opportunity to see the article in the Casper Star Tribune this weekend, but it profiled a couple of our local businesses, Happy Jack Software being one, and it dubbed us the Silicon Prairie. So you should check that out. Anyway, that's the history of the building. Since 2009, we've been using it for economic development purposes with our partner, LEDC. Recently, we have entertained interest from the Wyoming Game and Fish Department. Of course, they're an agency of the state of Wyoming. And one of the peculiarities of that building is it was built for a specific business. And that business had laboratory functions that are a little bit special. So as we've attempted to market that building to potential buyers, it has some peculiarities because it was built for a specific kind of tenant. What is a really great fit here for Game and Fish, as I understand, is there are laboratory spaces, and this building makes a really excellent fit for them to expand some of their operations here in Laramie. They have pursued and been successful in getting a $3 million appropriation approved by the governor and the legislature to purchase this building. And so what you have in front of you is a purchase agreement for doing so. If you have questions, I'm happy to discuss or answer those. Dan Furphy's here, and also the deputy director of Game and Fish, if you have questions for Mr. Kennedy.
Councilor Vitale?
Thank you, mayor. Part of the agreement, there's a section here miscellaneous, talks about a third-party beneficiary rights. It goes on and on with all the legalese and the language in there relative to that. It raises a question, because I think before I even came on council, there was a joint powers board, I think, that was established. And I don't know the direction we're going and what the optimism of growth. And I think once we get a couple buildings up there on Osiris Park, I think that's gonna take off, and when people come to town, you can show them we actually have a building up here, not just a whole bunch of land with a vision. And I think that would, I guess my question would be, if a joint powers board could be established, maybe five, six-member board, that might entail the CEO of LEDC, a couple of city-elected officials, a couple of state-elected representatives, and they would, in essence, be responsible for the recaptured money, to put it back into the development, as well as have the power to apply for grants and so forth, and somewhat be autonomous from the city and county, and maybe be able to function, I don't know at what level, mayor, but I don't know if that's a possibility or anything that could be considered. But I think at one time, there was that joint powers board that was established that had that function, and I don't know what happened to that along the way. Mr. Furphy might be able to address any of that, or our esteemed legislator.
Okay, let me, okay, let me, before we, before we do that, let me make sure there's no other questions for staff, and then I'll open it up to Mr. Furphy. Are there any other questions from staff? Yes. Councilor Pierce?
I'd like to just clarify the motion, if I could.
Please do.
I'm not sure if I need to make an amendment to the motion or just clarify the motion. And it's about the wording of the motion.
Would you reread the motion? City clerk?
Motion is to approve the offer to purchase real property between the State of Wyoming Game and Fish Commission and the City of Laramie, Wyoming, contingent upon the memorandum of agreement between Laramie Economic Development Corporation, LEDC, and the City of Laramie, Wyoming, and authorize the mayor and the city clerk to sign.
Okay.
I apologize if I misspoke. I said "an agreement," not "the agreement."
As written.
I did not mean as written, actually.
I'm sorry?
The, the motion should read contingent upon improvement of "an agreement," not this exact one that's in the package.
Not memorandum of agreement?
Or memorandum, I'm sorry, contingent upon an, a memorandum of agreement. It's not being specific to the one that's included in the packet in case there are changes.
Counsel, Councilor Pierce?
Okay, so I want to, I guess we're gonna have to vote on that, and then, because my change would be the MOU that we have right here.
Right. Why don't we, why don't we deal with that as an amendment, and you can make the amendment right now, and we'll get that on the ta, we'll get it on the table and vote on it?
I just have a quick question. The reason I did that specifically is I had a question in one of the very last paragraphs, and I wasn't sure if we were gonna discuss it tonight or if it was going to come up for the LEDC agreement. So I'm happy to discuss that and answer that, and I could amend my motion as well if...
Okay, well, if the agreement's part of the, if the agreement's part of the motion, the contingency, we certainly can discuss the agreement. All right?
That's fine.
Then I'll wait.
If you would like to wait, that would be fine also.
Then I can ask my question now.
Counselor Somerville?
And this could be a clarification, because the Cirrus Sky project was dealt with before I came on council, and I've not read that, so cover to cover. But in the, under section three of the LEDC agreement, restriction of proceeds on sale, item D, it says that the, it is anticipated that commercial building construction with the proceeds from the sale of the property will have its title transferred to LEDC in accordance with terms and conditions of existing agreements between the parties at a date in the future. And I just wanted a clarification as whether that was specific to the Cirrus Sky development and the agreements that are already existing in place right now. It just came across as a little concerned about just turning over a building that we got the proceeds for and just, and just giving it to somebody else.
Okay. City attorney?
Honorable mayor, Councilor Somerville, we have a contingent and development agreement that is in place with LEDC concerning Cirrus Sky, which is what this is referring to.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
There is just the one agreement, but they're talking about building, putting the building on Cirrus Sky.
Right.
This agreement that you're looking at right now is not in final form, or you would be voting on it also tonight.
Okay.
But this is the groundwork there, and I doubt that that language is going to change much.
Okay.
But the intent of that agreement was to restrict the use of the funds that came out of the proceeds of the sale of the Laramie Technology Building to the use at Cirrus Sky, and then a contingency in there if there happen to be extra monies to go into our economic development fund. The agreement that we have always had is with the state is to re-utilize...
Use that money.
...these funds as they go through, and this is simply specifying what the primary use would be, and then the contingent, if there's any left.
And when this talks specifically about having the title transferred to LEDC in accordance with the terms and conditions of other agreements, that...
That is the development and contingent agreement that is in place for Cirrus Sky.
Okay. That's what I needed to know. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
I'm happy to amend my motion to the agreement, or withdraw it and change it.
We can do this one or two ways. You can change your motion with the, with the acceptance of your second, or we can amend the motion if you'd like to see the motion in a different form.
I think it'd be cleaner if we just...
I can just change it. Okay. Your honor, I move to amend my original motion to read, I move to approve the offer to purchase real property between the State of Wyoming Game and Fish Commission and the City of Laramie, contingent upon the memorandum of agreement.
As written.
As written, between LEDC and the City of Laramie, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Okay.
Okay. I apologize if I misspoke. I said "an agreement," not "the agreement."
As written.
I did not mean as written, actually.
I'm sorry?
The, the motion should read contingent upon improvement of "an agreement," not this exact one that's in the package.
Not memorandum of agreement?
Or memorandum, I'm sorry, contingent upon an, a memorandum of agreement. It's not being specific to the one that's included in the package in case there are changes.
Okay.
Counsel, Councilor Pierce?
Okay, so I want to, I guess we're gonna have to vote on that, and then, because my change would be the MOU that we have right here.
Right. Why don't we, why don't we deal with that as an amendment, and you can make the amendment right now, and we'll get that on the ta, we'll get it on the table and vote on it?
I just have a quick question. The reason I did that specifically is I had a question in one of the very last paragraphs, and I wasn't sure if we were gonna discuss it tonight or if it was going to come up for the LEDC agreement. So I'm happy to discuss that and answer that, and I could amend my motion as well if...
Okay, well, if the agreement's part of the, if the agreement's part of the motion, the contingency, we certainly can discuss the agreement. All right?
That's fine.
Then I'll wait.
If you would like to wait, that would be fine also.
Then I can ask my question now.
Counselor Somerville?
And this could be a clarification, because the Cirrus Sky project was dealt with before I came on council, and I've not read that, so cover to cover. But in the, under section three of the LEDC agreement, restriction of proceeds on sale, item D, it says that the, it is anticipated that the commercial building construction with the proceeds from the sale of the property will have its title transferred to LEDC in accordance with terms and conditions of existing agreements between the parties at a date in the future. And I just wanted a clarification as whether that was specific to the Cirrus Sky development and the agreements that are already existing in place right now. It just came across as a little concerned about just turning over a building that we got the proceeds for and just, and just giving it to somebody else.
Okay. City attorney?
Honorable mayor, Councilor Somerville, we have a contingent and development agreement that is in place with LEDC concerning Cirrus Sky, which is what this is referring to.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
There is just the one agreement, but they're talking about building, putting the building on Cirrus Sky.
Right.
This agreement that you're looking at right now is not in final form, or you would be voting on it also tonight.
Okay.
But this is the groundwork there, and I doubt that that language is going to change much.
Okay.
But the intent of that agreement was to restrict the use of the funds that came out of the proceeds of the sale of the Laramie Technology Building to the use at Cirrus Sky, and then a contingency in there if there happen to be extra monies to go into our economic development fund. The agreement that we have always had is with the state is to re-utilize...
Use that money.
...these funds as they go through, and this is simply specifying what the primary use would be, and then the contingent, if there's any left.
And when this talks specifically about having the title transferred to LEDC in accordance with the terms and conditions of other agreements, that...
That is the development and contingent agreement that is in place for Cirrus Sky.
Okay. That's what I needed to know. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
I'm happy to amend my motion to the agreement, or withdraw it and change it.
We can do this one or two ways. You can change your motion with the, with the acceptance of your second, or we can amend the motion if you'd like to see the motion in a different form.
I think it'd be cleaner if we just...
I can just change it. Okay. Your honor, I move to amend my original motion to read, I move to approve the offer to purchase real property between the State of Wyoming Game and Fish Commission and the City of Laramie, contingent upon the memorandum of agreement.
As written.
As written, between LEDC and the City of Laramie, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Okay, the second on that was? City clerk?
Council Hanson.
Council Hanson, do you agree to that?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is the motion we're, we're discussing now.
Okay.
Further, further questions to staff on, on this? Counselor Hanson?
In restrictions on proceeds of sale on whatever, the third page, item B, I think that's the question that was raised by Councilor Vitale already, and I just wanted to have that clarified in my mind. It seems like whatever comes out of that sale is supposed to go into a commercial building to be located on the Cirrus Sky Technology Park on a site mutually selected by the parties, which seems to be within the spirit of the grant money, the original grant money, because it was for economic development. The only question that I have, are there any modifications needed to the original building, let me refer to it as the former Well Dog Building, before the folks of Game and Fish move in? And if there are such modifications, where does that money come from? Is that their, their money, or is that this money?
City, city attorney?
The agreement with the Game and Fish Department, while not finalized, basically says that they will do the inspection, they will do such as they need to do. That is not development. The agreement that we have and are considering tonight is a set price for what is in place, and that they then will do what they need to do.
They need to do. So the $3 million...
We have to dress that up. We also have some of that economic development monies, but it could come out of there if there was something that came up and said, you're responsible for it, certainly could be used for it.
Okay. But basically, as it reads right now, the $3 million would, in its entirety, go to economic development of a building up on this Cirrus Sky.
Counselor Hanson, there was a reference as to, could you specify exactly where that statement is?
It's on, it's called number three, restriction on proceeds of sale, item B, the funds shall be restricted, it starts. You see that item? In the memorandum, agreement to supersede memorandum of understanding.
Okay.
Did you find it?
Yeah, I found it. Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff from council before I ask Mr. Furphy to come up? Mr. Furphy, would you? And I believe Councilor Vitale did have a question for you. Okay. Honorable mayor, council members, let me say, first of all, we're, we're very excited about the potential sale to the Wyoming Game and Fish, and working closely with the city to develop a building in Cirrus Technology Park. That will assist us a lot. The current building that the Game and Fish in has been useful in that I've been able to show that building to potential companies coming to Laramie, showing them what we could do. But it was designed for a single purpose, and to have a new building design together with the city in Cirrus Technology Park will really be of a big benefit in trying to recruit companies to this community. So we look forward to that. With regards to the possibility, I guess it's, Joint Powers Board, your, your comments on that? Councilman Vitale, we have actually had a meeting. City manager Janine and mayor Dave Polikas and I sat down and discussed the potential for a joint powers board. We also had a meeting, Mayor Polikas and our county commission chairman, Tim Sullivan, and Phil Nicholas, and I sat down and discussed also the potential of a joint powers board. that we donated to the Laramie Technology Building, we're interested in donating our funds, also with the city's funds, to building this spec building. So we have a few details to work out, but I'm confident that's going to be an easy agreement to come to. Hope that answers your question.
It, it does in some ways. I just seem to remember that we, on these grants that are coming in, we're usually passed through, so that we don't do the actual contracting to pay contractors or something like that. We are usually passed through. Isn't that what I understand correctly on this? So that's why the question arose for me, since this money is basically, at least in name, still money that came from the Economic Development Council in Cheyenne. Is it handled the same way, namely, we pass it through and, and we have sort of a supervisory role on this money, but we don't do the actual contracting? So that's...
That is absolutely my agreement, that we would need to go through the same process that we do with all public money. Because even though LEDC's land value is in there, we want it handled just as though it was public money. So yes, thank you.
City manager, is there something to add to that?
Mayor, council, I just wanted to say that was my recommendation, as Mr. Furphy said, that because the monies maintain a public character, that it made more sense to me to recommend to LEDC and to you that the proceeds would come to the city's Economic Development Fund, and then when reused to build the speculative building, we would, you know, honor those processes that we apply to public funds, i.e. bid documents being put out and Wyoming preference being applied and those sorts of things. As to project management, this is the piece I wanted to address. You know, it really occurred to us as we met in the last couple of days and talked about this issue that, back to the Star Tribune, you know, dubbing us the Silicon Prairie, we really have a lot going on. And I think there's a fairly lengthy future discussion between the city and LEDC as partners in economic development regarding project management. We have just discussed WRI's new potential headquarters, which is an eight million dollar project. Mr. Furphy's mentioned, we expect a couple building, buildings to go up on Serra Sky in the next year or two. And we also have the Hyvis project underway currently. So we have a lot going on. I think it's time to have a big discussion about how we handle project management, whether internal to LEDC or the city, or if we looked outside third parties to handle project management like we've done in other pass-through economic development-type projects.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments from council?
I'd like to make just a few comments about this, this building and the funds and so forth and so on. And that is, in my mind, we need to recognize that the Well Dog building was built as an economic development project and pretty much funded by the State of Wyoming. The majority of the funds came from the State of Wyoming. I think it's 2.6 out of 3 million dollars or something like that. In one way, it was not a success because Well Dog pulled out, but in another way, we've, we've survived with it. But the value of that building right now, as far as what we can do with it, I think we're very lucky to be getting 3 million dollars for it. I think if we put it on the market and tried to get even 3 million dollars from a private party, we'd be waiting a long time. I mean, I, I think this is a wonderful opportunity, and I think the state is benefiting us by offering to purchase this building for the price they're offering to purchase it for. As far as where those recapture funds should go, I think the state, the legislature, has expressed a preference to put the money into our Serra Sky project in the form of a spec building, in the form of a building that's basically a shell, so that we have maximum flexibility that we can promote to perhaps attract other businesses or a business into the community. I think we have to be careful if we, I think we have to consider their preference in a very strong way. Another point I think I'd like to make is when we were, when we were trying to get the funds to build Serra Sky, I think we were trying to get 5.4 million dollars. There was a very strong argument by that slipboard that we should only be getting, I know it was, we should only be getting part of that in a grant, and they wanted to see us take a loan out for about one and a half million dollars, okay? I stood up before that board and said, "We don't have the means to do that. We have no means at this point in time of collecting 1.4 million dollars to be able to generate a payback to the state." The state was very generous in giving us the total grant, but it was a very, very close vote. It was a vote that split that board. We were very lucky to get the 5.4 million versus the 4. whatever million plus the loan. So what I'm saying is, I'm not sure it would be looked upon very kindly if we took those funds after basically begging the state for a complete grant for the full amount, the 5.4 million, and then turned around and spent that money on something else other than Serra Sky. So I, I am going to, I'm in favor of putting that spec building up. I think it's a really good direction to go in, and I'm also in favor of supporting the purchase agreement for 3 million dollars from the state, okay?
Anyone else from council wish to speak before I open it up to the public? Any members of the public would like to speak on this? Yes, Mr. Hale?
I know how hard everyone tries to keep to the agenda item, and this doesn't have anything to do with item number nine. That is, I'm smelling natural gas back there intermittently, and I would recommend you shut the furnace off until such time you can determine what the problem is.
Assistant city manager, can you have it checked out?
Yeah, Mayor, we're calling for them to go check. My suspicion is somebody is idling in the intake area, but we'll, we'll look into it and let you know. Thank you, Mr. Hale.
Thank you, Mr. Hale. All right. Any other comments from the public? City clerk, would you roll call, please?
Somerville?
Yes.
Hansen?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Temprat?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Vitale?
Yes.
Weaver absent. Polikas?
Yes.
Eight yeses, one absent, Your Honor.
And the motion carries. Okay. Item number 10, Councilor Somerville. Let me ask you this, would this be an appropriate time to take a short break? Why don't we take a short break for five minutes? We can, we can make sure that the natural gas situation is not a dangerous situation, and we'll reconvene in hopefully five to 10 minutes. Thank you.
Light a cigarette.
I won't.
Go light a cigarette back there, will you?
Just testing. Yes, and the reason why I'm okay with that, and I can go into more detail, is because there's a shut-off for it. Most people turn it off in the winter. Well, I can show you, there's an awful lot of communities that are not doing it. My, my daughter has a, has a, has a system like this in Colorado, and I asked her about it, and she says, you know, she's in a cold climate, you're going to exchange the air in your house three times, three times?
An hour.
An hour? When it's 20 below outside and pay for the heat? Do you see what I'm saying? So what she does is, they turn it off, and when they feel a lot of humidity in the house, they, they turn it back on again. Does that help? I'm not saying I agree with it, and you could get rid of that, and I'd be happy to, but...
I just knew you had done some meetings.
No, the argument, the argument for it is, is we're building these houses so tight that we're, we're getting...
Come in and see, I have too damn many doctor's appointments.
You doing okay?
Okay.
I'll be well when I run, when I run out of money, then I know I'm well. Like a ping pong ball, go see this guy. Oh, boy.
Did you see the thing in the paper that did from that guy that used to work there? Apparently they didn't bolt Australia. Well, I could say, I mean, I'm glad it worked out. I mean, it sounds like, you know, it worked out. If it was a building that could be utilized for...
This building's perfect.
How many, how many employees do they have here in town from Well Dog now?
They had 19, didn't they?
That many?
19, and they want to get up to 37, so they're...
And they have two different operations in Australia. The original, original founder of that still involved or is he still? He's still involved. He used to live just a block away from me. Going concern for a while there and then things went south. So they got totally out of the, they were, Well Dog, they had a gas, they went over into...
Now they're back into it, and that's where they're coming from.
So John Pope's been traveling Australia and all of them.
He's Australian.
Nice guy, really nice guy. They lived in a small, small home. CEO, founder, and all that, president of Well Dog. He was probably living in a home then, 10 years ago, that was worth, how long has it been? Has it been more than 10?
Yeah.
15 years, probably worth maybe then under 100,000. Really loved, frugally, but...
Oh, that's good.
Some of his expenses are crazy on his... Does he have the, the owner? Is he still the principal owner of Well Dog? Does he have the most shares in the operation?
I think it's this...
They have the controlling interest. They have controlling interest. These companies look for great ideas, but they have cash flow problems, they try and buy it out and end up with it. They, they, they're really good at sniffing them out. Probably see that all the time. Some people, yeah, but then some people get those brilliant ideas and sell it for just a fraction of what they could that they held on to. My dad did a lot of that stuff. I know he, he sold, he was, my dad was probably the third largest uranium operator in the States. He found one, well, he had one set of claims that he sold for 10 million dollars and ended up making 5 million dollars. You see, he had it for the lead zinc. And never looked at it for recreational use. Sold it for song, and, you know, now it's worth billions.
Hey, this was a pretty good article, particularly when it shows Laramie up there.
I like that terminology, Silicon Valley of the Prairie. Silicon Valley.
That was a good article. I know, I know. We don't want the rest of the state to see this article.
They'll do something to change it.
There's something coming out.
You got one back.
I don't know. Hey, Sue? We gotta wait, Sue. We have to wait.
Nikki has disappeared somewhere.
Did Paul Weaver tell you? Did you know Paul was going to be absent?
Hope he's all right.
Thank you.
No, he never mentioned a word. And you know, I have an email out to him for a meeting, or, well, meeting with the judge, and he hasn't responded to it, so maybe something, maybe he's sick or something.
I figured, yeah. Divide by four.
I don't know. I know, we gotta get going. Well, I'm missing two counselors.
Aren't they right out there?
It's going to my dad. And he want me to make the ass cookies.
Do you guys have another family restaurant like...
We could. But the only problem is, I think she's introducing the next one. Oh, no, Somerville is. It's Somerville.
Let's do it.
Okay. Let's go ahead and get started. Look at her. Well, I've told them to get in here. I'm not their babysitter. All right. I'm going to call the meeting back to order again. We are on item number 10, Councilor Somerville.
Thank you, Your Honor. Do I need to have a read the ordinance again, since we're on second reading?
It's up to you.
Yes.
City, would you like the city clerk?
Yeah, the city clerk, could you read the...
Read the title, ordinance by title.
Title only, please. And nor is adopting and amending codes regulating buildings and building construction within the city, be it ordained by the city council of the City of Laramie, Wyoming. Thank you. I move to approve original ordinance number 1890 on... I move to approve original ordinance number eighteen ninety on second reading.
Okay, is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Second by Counselor Vitale. Director Hunt.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Building Official Jerry Hankin is with us, and I'll defer to him to explain the modifications, the few modifications we've made for second reading.
Okay, let me ask you this. There's also a recommended motion to amend. Should we do that now, or should we wait a few minutes after Mr. Hanson, or, yes, Hankin?
It would be appropriate to do that now, Mayor.
Okay, council.
Thank you.
Councilperson Somerville?
Uh, I, thank you, your honor. I further move to amend section twenty-four of the ordinance to read as follows. Section fifteen dot two-four dot zero-one-zero dot E dot three of the Laramie municipal code is amended to read as follows. Section R four-oh-two dot four dot one dot two of the International Energy Conservation Code is deleted in its entirety.
Second.
Okay, there's an amendment and a second to the amendment. Mr. Hankin, and this would, if you could, just address the amendment at this time, and we'll vote on that, and then we'll go back to the main motion.
Okay, mayor and city council members. The amendment has to do with a, a section in the International Energy Conservation Code that applies to one- and two-family dwellings. It is, it pertains directly to a, a test that's required to measure infiltration into a house. We feel that the amendment would be appropriate to delete that simply because of the cost, and we feel that we can mitigate and make sure that the, the code is followed in, in other ways. So we would recommend that you delete that section.
Any, any questions or comments on the amendment? Yes, Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, your honor. It, the way I understand this is it has to do with energy, energy conservation, which is a big item these days. And by amending this, we are allowing sort of to continue building as usual. While this section, the way I understand it, addresses energy conservation in one or two-family buildings. Am I correct?
Mayor and council member Hanson, that is absolutely correct. There, there's a new, a new provision in the twenty-twelve Energy Conservation Code, and it has to do with air infiltration. It's a brand-new thing, and it's, it's, it's an important thing, but it, but it is brand-new. The intention of the amendment is not to relax those standards. The intention is simply to get rid of a test that we believe is too expensive to accomplish what it's intended to accomplish.
Can you describe the test?
Absolutely. The, the, the test is typically, it's, it's referred to as a blower door test. And what it does is it measures infiltration, in other words, air leaking into a building. Uh, there's a very definite way that it has to be performed, but in, in simple terms, you just close up the building, you pressurize the building using a big fan, and then you measure the rate at which the air leaks out. And that tells you what that air infiltration rate is. And that simply is the test.
Counselor Hanson, maybe I can help you out on it, 'cause I was one of the proponents of this. In the new code, there's higher standards for insulation and also making houses tighter. I think that's wonderful. All of us should be going in that direction, okay? So to do that, you're using more insulation, better insulation, you're using more caulking, you're using, you're sealing up the house and so forth and so on. Nothing, nothing in this amendment changes that. Matter of fact, if it's done correctly, it should be inspected by our city to make sure it's done. Now, the test that we're referring to is usually accomplished at the very end of a house after it's built. I'm guessing, and I'm only guessing, it's probably a five-hundred-dollar-plus item, that it's not, it's not, it takes, it, it takes quite an effort to do it. It's a valuable test for the consumer in that it tells them that their house is built to a very high standard, okay? But it's a test, if the house is done correctly and the inspections are done correctly, is not needed, okay? Now furthermore, when that test is accomplished at the end, and it were not to pass the test, or it were to be slightly below the test, what are you gonna do? Tear apart half the house and start rebuilding it again? And that would be probably your only option, to, to, to seal things up correctly, 'cause everything has been covered up by that point in time. I'm all for the test, but I think it ought to be optional. I think every homeowner ought to, ought to request it for my new home, if in fact, you know, that's a concern to them. But I don't think we ought to impose a five-hundred or whatever dollar it costs on every home that's being built. Or, for that matter, any substantial remodels. Other communities, some are adopting it, a lot of communities are not adopting it because of that reason, okay? And does that help?
It helps, and my response would be, could we, instead of amending this section, say, this is an optional matter, but keep it on the books and say, it's optional?
It is.
I, I mean, you know, this way, it's gone, and, and there is no test. But if you, if you amend it to say, we keep the test as a possibility, but make it an optional test, isn't that a, a better way to go than simply say, the section doesn't exist anymore? And make nobody aware of it, or something like that? I mean, I, I'm just concerned that we are sort of relaxing a standard that could be applied and should be applied in this day and age.
Mr. Hankin?
Um, mayor and, and council member Hanson, I, I don't, I don't think we're relaxing the standard. The standard will stay in place. I think it would confuse the issue if you, if you didn't either require it or, or not. We have builders that do it. Most of them are from out of town. Being a new thing in Laramie, there aren't really very many people or anybody that does the test, so those people would be coming from out of town. But the builders that already do the test will continue to do the test, and perhaps with a little encouragement, some of the others might begin doing that, too. We, we don't think that, and I think the mayor is correct, in, in probably the cost of that test, it's probably somewhere around five-hundred dollars. That's the easy way to do it, is just require the builder to do it. The, the more difficult way would be to step up the inspections in a, in a way that we can cover all of those. And we think that we can do that and save, save the cost of the test. If we can't, we can come back and, and make some changes, you know, to, to make sure that those standards are met.
Thank you.
Any other counselors on the amendment? Okay, anyone from the public wish to speak to the amendment? City clerk, would you do roll call on the amendment?
Somerville?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Kemperet?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Vitale?
Yes.
Weaver, absent, Polikas.
Yes.
One absent, eight yeses, your honor.
Okay, so the motion, or the amendment?
Carries.
Carries. Uh, back to the main motion, probably, Mr. Hankin, you'd probably want to address the main motion.
Mayor and council members, as far as the, the main motion, we would recommend that, that the two changes be made to section twenty-four, and we would recommend that, that it move on to the third and final reading.
Okay, are there any other questions? I'd be happy to answer those. Any questions for staff? Okay. Thank you. Any comments from council on this motion? Anyone from the public wish to address the council on this subject? City clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Somerville?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Kemperet?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Vitale?
Yes.
Weaver, absent, Polikas.
Yes.
One absent, eight yeses, your honor.
Motion carries. Item number eleven, Counselor Vitale.
Thank you, mayor. There's two parts to this, so they'll be two separate motions, right? I move to approve a bid and construction contract for the Indian Hills Drive Storm Drainage Improvements with Hammacher Excavation, Inc. of Laramie, Wyoming, in the amount of one million, one hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents, and a contingency amount of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for a total amount of one million, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, eight hundred and forty-two bucks and seventy-eight cents, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
There's a motion, a second by Counselor Kemperet. City staff, Director Hunt?
Mayor and council on this item, I would like to defer to Project Engineer Eric Japp.
Thank you.
Your honorable mayor and council members, my name is Eric Japp, as Randy just said. I'm a, I'm part of the engineering team here at the city of Laramie. As you, most of you remember, the Indian Ridge subdivision was approved on council on October seventh, two thousand and thirteen. Along with this approval, the, with this project, council directed staff to build a storm sewer system down Indian Hills Drive. The storm sewer system would drain the Indian Ridge subdivision. In addition, it would convey existing storm water down Indian Hills Drive and tie into the existing golf course outfall line that exists there. On January seventh, two thousand and fourteen, council approved a professional service contract with WWC Engineering for the design, construction, management, and inspection services for the Indian Hills Drive Storm Drainage Improvement Project. This design was placed out to bid in March of two thousand and fourteen, and the city clerk received bids on April first, two thousand and fourteen. The city only received one bid for this project by Hammacher Excavation, which did exceed the original project budget. The project was put out to bid in two different alternatives. Alternative one was just patching the excavated trench in the street where the storm sewer line would be run. Alternative two would be completely rotamilling the street and replacing it with three inches of asphalt. While not as good as completely reconstructing the street, rotamilling and repaving the street will extend the life of the street significantly longer than a patch would. As you see there, we have, the two alternatives were given. Alternative one was, which the patching was, was for one million, two hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighteen cents. Alternative two was for the full rotamilling and street, repaving of the street for one million, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars, eight hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents. In Hammacher's bid, he made a proposal that if we extend the project by forty-five days, he would drop the project cost by a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. Hammacher Excavation still would be responsible for making the Indian Ridge subdivision drain by June fourteenth, and this would still meet the requirements that the city made with the Indian Ridge subdivision. So by, even by extending the contract, we're not putting the Indian Ridge subdivision in any danger of drainage. The new base amount, alternative one for the patch, would be one million, seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighteen cents. And alternative two, which would be the full rotamill, would be one million, one hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents. City staff, engineering, and street department met, and we are in favor of the full rotamill job and also extending the contract, which would draw, drop it down. So it'd be a base bid plus alternative two for the amount of one million, one hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents. The next item that you guys will see on your, item B is also for the budget resolution for the three hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents, and that would be coming out of cash reserves, as we'll, we can discuss later. But at this time, do you guys have any question? I can entertain any questions in regard to the drainage.
Counselor Hanson?
Thank you, your honor. Just one question. The contingency seems a bit more than ten percent. Is there a reason for that?
Um, the contingency is about eleven percent. Honorable mayor and Counselor Hanson, the contingency is about eleven percent of the project cost. It was rounded up slightly harder, higher than the ten percent. This, adding the rotamill at the end of the project, and there might, there might be additional curb and gutter added to the project due to that. Also, due to the storm sewer lines and inlets, the design did not take into account joint-to-joint. By increasing that, we have a little bit of extra contingency to go joint-to-joint for any of the storm sewer inlets that are being replaced.
To my counting, it's more than eleven percent, 'cause it, ten percent would be a hundred and, a hundred and thirteen thousand, right? So it's seventeen thousand over the ten percent level. I don't think that's ten percent, that's more. But, I mean, I'm not quibbling here, but you have a good reason why you wanted extra contingency money, okay?
Any, any other comments or questions from council? Thank you. Any comments from the public on this item? City clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Vitale?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Kemperet?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Weaver, absent, Polikas.
Yes.
One, one absent, eight yeses, your honor.
And the motion carries. Okay, item number?
Would have part B there, mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for reminding me of that. Counselor Vitale?
I move to approve budget resolution twenty-fourteen dash twenty-six to transfer three hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents from cash reserves to the Indian Hills Drive Storm Drainage Improvement Project.
Thank you, and is there a second on that?
Second.
Second by Counselor Henry. Director Hunt?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, just a quick update on the previous item. I did a quick calculation, and the contingency is eleven point three nine percent, so correct, it is a bit over the eleven, not dramatically so, but that's the precision.
Bad at math, so thank you for helping me out.
I couldn't have done it without my instrument here, so. Mayor and council, the, the second part of this motion is to amend the budget to provide the proper amount for this project. The unfortunate experience with most of our projects, we had a happy exception earlier this evening, as it turned out with Canby and Harney Alley, but as you all have seen more often than, than the exception, projects this year have been running a bit over the budgeted amount. There's been a consistent pattern, we're sorry to say, and we hope it's temporary. In this case, however, with the ability to provide for this project under city reserves, as you are all aware, the project itself is a time-sensitive and mission-critical project for the neighborhood and for the city as a whole. It will solve one of the identified deficiencies in the north of Laramie drainage study that council reviewed last year. And as those of you who are in council will remember, the Indian Ridge project and the Indian Hills neighborhoods interface with that as a critical item for the city as a whole and considered vital in this case. So staff would recommend the amendment of the budget. We will have opportunity to discuss during your forthcoming biennial budget how the reserves and, and other features of the budget may, may adjust accordingly. But in this case, there is sufficient capital in the reserve part of the city budget general fund to accommodate this. Would you all care to add anything? I guess I said it right. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for staff?
Just a comment. I think i- in the proposed cost, it's referred to as cash reserve yours, and I wonder whether it had anything to do with saviors or something like that. You might want to correct. You might want to correct.
I cannot make theological speculations this evening, Counselor, but I can say that's most likely, in fact, almost certainly, a typo.
Okay, I think so, too.
Anyone else, or Counselor Shumway?
I just want to make a comment. This, this approval of this construction contract is the result of quite a bit of deliberation that's gone on, not only between us, the developer, but also the engineering and the design group that did this. This is not our only option. This is probably the most comprehensive, and it's one that's also addresses future needs for this area. It's the one that seems to have the best solution of all the proposals. It's certainly not the least expensive. This is one that's, that's quite a bit more expensive than other alternatives, but this is the one that solves most of the problems and, and also looks to the future. So I will support this. I, I think I would have preferred that we not spend this much money, but this is one that, in the long run, will probably be the best solution for the, especially for this neighborhood. I'm, I'm sure, after their discussion, and they came to us in, in quite a few numbers, this is the one that they're, they're satisfied with, they're happy with, and I think it solves a long-term solution for them, and so I'm going to support it. And hopefully, this will take care of not only the immediate, but the future needs for stormwater drainage in this area.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone from the public wish to comment, comment on this? City clerk, could you do a roll call, please?
Vitale?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Kemper?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Weaver, absent. Pelikas?
Yes.
One absent, eight yeses, your honor.
Thank you, the motion carries. Item number 12, Counselor Shumway.
Okay, Your Honor, I will just make the motion. I move to acknowledge that the point has not presented security in any form for the point project pursuant to the provisions of the delayed improvement agreement, but further move that staff is directed not to initiate any enforcement action on any temporary certificates of occupancy for the point project, which are set to expire on May 30th, 2014.
Thank you. Is there a second on that motion?
I'll start it.
There's a, there's a second by Counselor Kemper. City staff?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the item before you has been in, under some intense discussion over the past few days, and rather than overly assume anything, at this point, I would like to keep my comments to you and my explanation as brief as possible. Of course, be glad to answer any questions and provide further information, and I know that speaks for the rest of the city staff as well. This is the third in a series of three items that have taken place, three votes, I should say, by official action of city boards and commissions and this council. The first being a variance that was approved by the Board of Adjustment Planning Commission on January 27th of this year. The second one on February 18th was a vote by this council to approve a delayed improvement agreement. And the third and item before you tonight is the acceptance or alternative to acceptance of a financial security for the project. Briefly, the bridge and road that are commitment of the point at WYO, the development in question, are a project that was required and committed to by the developer and approved and planned and processed by the city last year. The bridge has been under some degree of construction for many months now, since last late summer, early fall, thereabouts. And there have been a number of delays, and some of those have been outlined to you before. The point we're at tonight is the point of a security that would bridge the gap, no pun intended, between now and the newly authorized, newly as of the variance on January 27th, expiration date of the temporary certificates of occupancy for the project. This is standard development practice. If there is a project that is to be occupied or of interest to the owner to have occupied before full completion and acceptance of the improvements onsite and offsite, the standard instrument is a development security. That history is a bit different, and we did outline that at some length for you in your February 28th, or February 18th, Development Improvement Agreement discussion, so I won't rehash that or reiterate that here. The point we are at tonight is the point of acceptance of the security. I am obliged to tell you that, to my knowledge and to my staff's knowledge, in community development, we do not have a security submitted to us, as I stand before you. That is the reason behind the alternative motion that has been made and that is on the table for you tonight. I would like to call your attention to some documents that you haven't seen until this evening, although they've been out there since the variance was approved. And those are attached to your alternative motion and the handout that you were given at the beginning of the meeting. Specifically, the letter of approval, which is the second page or third page in your, in your set of documents there, dated February 1st, 2014. That's the letter of approval that the staff provided to commemorate or memorialize the Board of Adjustment action in approving the variance. And the specific item I would want to point out to you is item two. That's a replication or a duplication of the condition approved by the Board of Adjustment on January 27th. It reads as follows. This is a condition that is attached to the variance, and without the fulfillment of which, the variance itself becomes void. Item two reads, "The delayed improvement security in appropriate amount and form, as determined by the city, shall be submitted and accepted by separate city council review and approval on or before April 15th, 2014." As we stand here, that condition would need to be fulfilled tonight. We, the staff, do not have a security instrument in hand to provide to you. Whether that exists or not, I believe we will find out before the evening is over. I believe I'll leave it at that, but be glad to answer any questions you may have at the moment.
Yes, Counselor Shumway.
Your Honor, there, there is reluctance on this council to move, from what I, from what I have gathered, in a positive way, but I think it's important that we do. This obviously has been very controversial from the very beginning, did not have strong public support for various reasons. They have asked us to have, give them many special considerations for the project, which we, we have voted on and approved as it's gone along. There are penalties that could be imposed at this time, and it would be very, well, what we're doing is we're looking at, at the occupants of the building that would be very inconvenient, especially getting close to finals time to vacate the property also. I don't see a big financial burden on the city should we extend this, you know, final delayed improvement agreement to the end of May, even though there is, there has been considerable amount of staff time, and there has been many concessions by the city staff to allow this to go forward when it, it is not our typical way in which we deal with developers in this city. They have received, like I said, many special considerations, and there's been a lot of things that the city has spent time with that is uncommon. I, I'm going to support this as I read it, simply because I think it's only fair to the citizens of Laramie, but I would like to emphasize that I think that we have, that our staff has been very reasonable in the way in which they've dealt with, with something that has been very difficult.
Thank you. I, I'm wondering if we should not allow the representative of the point to speak. I, I know all of us have comments, and I'm wondering if we shouldn't hear from both, both sides. But before I do that, are there any specific questions for staff from council? Okay, so Counselor Hanson?
Your Honor, I keep on reading this recommended motion, and it, to my mind, is not quite clear. It says that we will, that we will ask, would ask staff, would ask staff, to not initiate any enforcement action on any temporary certificates of occupancy for the point project, and then it says, "which are set to expire on May 30th." That's, of course, sort of the new idea, because they are actually expiring, I guess, on April 15th, correct? So I'm not quite clear, is the, May 30th sort of a drop dead point? Because that isn't clearly addressed here. If nothing happens by May 30th, then the certificates of occupancy will be rescinded. Is that my understanding? I, I just couldn't follow it from this reading here.
I would defer to the city attorney.
Yeah.
City attorney?
Basically, the Planning Commission, acting as the Board of Adjustment, set the termination of the temporary certificates of occupancy to expire on May 30th.
Okay.
And so the contingency in there of getting the security agreement would terminate them early, but the, they would terminate on their own. They would expire according to the variance that was granted on May 30th. And what we have been requested to do is allow the project to continue on and that it will be done before the 30th of May. Once the project has been completed, whether it reaches the 30th or before, then they could apply for a regular certificate of occupancy in there. If the project has not been completed, then there will be no certificates of occupancy that would be present, because the temporaries would have expired, and there would not be a permanent one issued. Does that clear up the 30th?
Yes, I think it does. But what happens between now and the 30th?
If we are directed not to enforce the temporaries?
Okay, all right. But that enforcement would entake, would then take place if nothing happened?
The enforcement would be that they expire and they do not exist. There is no permanent, then at the 30th of May, then we would have to approach that differently. That's why the date expressed in there.
So it is sort of a drop dead date?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff before I allow Mr. Nicholas to speak? Mr. Nicholas?
Thank you. Honorable Mayor and members of council, what I'd like to do is, is present to you an alternative approach to a motion to address some issues that I think that are, that I've raised, that answer some of the questions. It's just an alternative approach. You don't have to, certainly not have to adopt it. I would like to at least consider it as a, another way to approach it. So I'd like to distribute that. And then I'd also like to take you through the history of the bridge, the construction, just photographically, to give you a better understanding with respect to what the hurdles have been here. I know that many of you, these are your constituents that live next to the, the facility. You have the optometrist there. In my other hat, they're my constituents, too. Those folks have legitimate concerns with respect to what the speed is, what took place. There is an explanation. I don't want to provide it as an excuse. Certainly, things could have been done differently, but if I might, Mr. Honorable Mayor, is present those to you for, and then I'll take you through them.
Thank you. Yes, please do it.
Thank you, I'll pass them around.
We're going to be one short up here. Unless someone has two.
Here we go, something else.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
That's okay.
Did you get a copy of this?
Um, you know, I'll just take you to the alternative approach from the motion. The difficulty that you have that exists is that we're sitting here on the 15th, which is the day designated to have the security in place. When you go out to purchase a security, whether it be a letter of credit or a bond, you pay about 2% of the price for the fee to have it. And as early as January, the point understood that there was going to be a conflict in that they were given till May 30th to complete all the improvements. There was a request was for them to have the, the security in place by the 15th. Now, I think there are really two forms of security. One is, there will be required for them to do a security bond for the warranty, for a one-year warranty following the completion of the road. Well, the road's not ready, is not completed, but it, that bond, we're working on it today in conjunction with Simon Construction. The other bond is, is bonding the uncompleted work, both onsite, and really, 30th Street is our biggest area of attention right now. If you look at the, the city's assessment of the cost, even since that time, almost $200,000 worth of work has been completed just in those few days. The, I've spoke with Simons this morning, and Steve Bastian has promised me that they will have, the, the road base will be completed and ready to accept both curb and gutter and pavement by the end of April. And the, he expects that the curb and gutter will be, will be also completed as long as he has six days sequential warm nights that are above freezing. The first six-day prediction since January starts in, on Friday, actually, and they think they're going to hit that. Now, their asphalt plant will not start back up until Septem, or, excuse me, till May. They earlier had anticipated bringing it up in April, but just weather conditions and the economics of it, they've decided not to bring it up till May. They, he tells me that they will have the pavement in by May 15th, barring weather or things that are outside of his control. So what the point is asking is that the, the council essentially say, and what the motion says is, the, the motion provides that the bond security is zero until May 25th, and on May 25th, your staff would assess what's, they believe is, the non-complete aspects and what's both onsite and offsite. I, I picked the 25th because that is a few days before your May 27th work session, so if there's, there is a dispute, I don't think there will be one, but we can have a mechanism to resolve it. But by May 30th is the drop dead day. They must have security. Now, the security is kind of an interesting thing, because if they go out and actually spend the 2% for the security, once they provide that, then I think they have actually two years to complete it. That's not their objective. Their objective was, first, to have it completed last fall, then to have it completed now. It's, their, their students want it, they promised it. then to have it completed now. It's their their students want it. They promised it. They believed that they were going to have it by April 15th. They wanted to have it a month before school was let out, so the students would see what they were essentially leasing for the following year. And things have just fallen fallen behind schedule. I'd like to take you for a moment through the photographs, just to give you a an a concept. So they're the photographs are generally in order of time. And they give you a feel for what was encountered with what they encountered and their contractor, Simons, encountered for the project. So the first photograph on the first page up to the right, that's the road going down to 30th. So you can see by fall, they had completed the road down to 30th. It's a road right now that services nothing. It just goes down to 30th, and obviously, they wanted to continue it. The next photograph on the next of that is you're seeing that that red valve. There's actually two of those, because as they got into this, they discovered that there was a 24-inch main water supply system going underneath the bridge. Certainly, if we'd have known at the time of that construction that we were going to put a bridge there, you would not have built it underneath the bridge. So it was an elaborate process, bringing folks from out of the state to come in, and they actually put in two hot taps. They actually tapped this thing while the water was running, because it's your main supply for the the water tanks. They hopped tapped it, then they diverted the the 24-inch line around. And then they timed it with the city. Now, the city asked certain timings. That we had to hit it either early in the summer, or we had to get it late in order to make sure that you didn't run out of water during sprinkler system season. So there were timing issues that were required. And in addition, you require recall that this aspect, these works, needed to be bid out in order for the reimbursement to take place. So there was a reimbursement aspect. As they after they got the hot tapping done, that was the hardest, the 24-inch line. Then they began trenching for the the footings. And you see those pictures below. You can see at the bottom that they actually had to bring a cherry picker in, because the power line was right in the trench where the they had to secure that while they trenched it out to put in all the utilities. One of the things that I point out to you in this photograph is look at all the water. So you've got Spring Creek coming through, and the elevations for the footings are lower than Spring Creek. So they're infiltrated with water immediately, and that becomes important later. But not only is it a mess, but water becomes your largest enemy right now, trying to get the footings in and get them poured correctly. So that's just an aspect that began happening. If you turn to the next page, you can begin to see that now the footings, you you see the backfill sand. That's on the 24-inch line. We're now hitting some snow season. But one of the things I'd point out to you is look at the number of utilities that go through. Most of those utilities were unanticipated, including one fiber optic land that what I mean by that is that the engineer that was employed by them, a local engineer, had not they weren't identified on the plans. It's new information. That really slowed down the entire process. Let's take the fiber optic lane. It's a main Comcast line, and we said, can you move it? Yeah, give us a work order for a year from now. We'll be back. Well, if you don't want to do a work order for a year from now, then you're you're tied to trying to build around the facility, which we did. So you get the the gist of what's they're working around that. In fact, that that just that you the Comcast line required significant, almost a month of planning, because we had to go out and get new engineers to come in and how engineer how to cut a hole in the bridge member. And you'll see that. The city is going to take ownership of the bridge. The city said, look, this is important. People are going to run on it over it. Do not do don't even touch that piece of concrete until you have a professional engineer say, this is not only how you cut it, but this is how you mend or address that. So you can now see that by all the footings get in place in late fall. They're dealing with the utilities. And then the bridge components become come in. You can see how they come in on a section. Flipping to the next page, you now see the the components being laid in place in January. And if you look down on the the second photograph on the right, lower down, you can see where the fiber optic line actually comes above the footing. And a notch had to be created inside the bridge to to accommodate that. And and seriously, that took almost almost one month delay for me to get everybody lined out, to get Comcast lined out, get their approval, get the city to approve a cut to a bridge that you're going to take ownership to. What's happening, though, is by the time this all this gets laid in, as you can see, we're now into January. January was a very cold month. All the water that you see had infiltrated all the trenches, and it was a mess. It was not only a mess, but it's iced over. Now, when the water was running in those earlier trenches, the good knew that it creates a warm that prevents freezing. But once the water gets out into the 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 trenches, the excavations, it actually froze. And so now you've got not only mud, but you've got freezing. And Simons advised us that they believed it was not prudent to do any more work on the footings until the the ground was thawed out. It's again, it's your bridge. I don't think you would want it if you thought about it either. So really, from January, when the cold months hit, when the water was frozen, Steve Bastian told me personally, he says, look, Phil, I can't I can't do it. I mean, you don't want to be it's too much of a mess. I I'm essentially shut down until the thaw is. Now, it may be that they their crews are let off that time, too. I don't know. I'm just taking him at his word. I believe him. So within two weeks, and if you flip the page, you can see within two weeks of the thaw, just shovel testing, when the the soil was thawed at the bottom where the water was infiltrated, Simons brought their crews back in. They poured. You can see where they began pouring the footings on the in the trenches. They had to do some more excavation. You can see the wing walls are being poured. And now you see that this is all activity in the last two weeks. You flip the page. You've got your the wing walls in. You can see the 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 asphalt tar paper being lined out for the joints. You see the next picture where the the backfill is occurring against the the facility. And then on the last page, you see work now beginning on one of the largest elements, and that is that the stormwater coming down the 30th Street, where it hits the point comes in a concrete stormwater. It has to be melt or a union put in for the plastic extension that takes it beyond the wing wall. So they're now building right now the manhole for that and to pick it up. So my point is this, is this was was a complicated bridge. These these folks came in, and they've got a substantial multimillion-dollar investment in the community. The community benefits by having this $15 million investment. They had a contingency fund. They've exceeded that. They've gone over their contingency. You I heard you speak earlier today. You you understand these concepts. They had a contingency built in. They've blown through that. Their overrun above that is already $800,000. They are completing the work. They want this done. And I could tell you that in they knew there was a conflict in the variance language in January. They walked out of the meeting. They were assured by Simons that they could get the work done by April 15th. And for those of us that are skiers, you know that it was a pretty good season. It was it was a colder winter than we've had in some weddings. Not as cold as years ago. But it was cold enough that the frost hit in there, and it didn't come out. Simons has an incentive built in to get the 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 bridge as quickly as possible. They want to get it in. They get their their essentially full payment bonus if they get get it on time. Our folks were really surprised when they came to Laramie. They had to get departments up. They had to hire a substantial amount of labor-ready force from out of state to get it going. They just found that the construction crews weren't there. They were surprised last summer when they were working with Simons. And Simons came to us and said, look, we'll give you two solid weeks here. But at the end of that two weeks, we're off. We have to go to the city project, or we have to go to the school projects. That's something they just don't encounter in larger communities. And, you know, I it's not an excuse, but we in Laramie have to recognize that we present hurdles, and some of the hurdles these folks encountered. No matter how you look at it, and councillor Shamway, you you mentioned treatment of other contractors. I agree with you, and I represent lots of contractors in town. But I I've thought back as long as I've been clear back to when I was on the planning commission. I served on for almost eight years. I don't know of any contractor in town that has ever offered up to put a one and a half million-dollar bridge to develop about 30 acres of land. And it's a bridge that's the city of Laramie has been this has been a conundrum since I was on the the Laramie Planning Commission 30 years ago. I'm starting to age myself. But the when you went back there, how are we going to get it? Who's going to pay the cost to get across there? They encountered extra costs just in the planning of of Spring Creek. When they got in there, they found that the the plans or the the Corps of Engineers still believes on their paper that Spring Creek travels through Murdochs underneath the McDonald's and travels on to Washington Park. It hasn't existed in that configuration as long as I've been in Laramie. There my friends have been that grew up here saw that condition. Now, that's not their fault, and I'm not blaming the city. I'm just saying, these are things that every bit of the way, that issue, for example, but it took us 30 days to work through. Can we when can we start working in the the creek? And we never really got it solved. Eventually, we found a way to get around it. But it was an expensive process of high or trihydro or not trihydro, but western water to work us through the details. We then had to work with the Corps. We couldn't put a foot inside of Spring Creek and start working until we did it. Every one of these, 30 days here, 30 days here. As to the neighbors, I understand, and I and I apologize to them. These folks apologized to them. I've made sure that, you know, with the optometrist folks, with Sue and Dr. Voucher, we've told them, our folks, the day that work is done, they've got to get in there, get their sprinklers fixed, get their trees watered. And actually, they've they've ruined a tree. They've got to replace that. I'll personally make sure that that's happening. It's been inconvenient for the people at the the Laramie Senior Center. They've got one access that's tied up. But, you know, the other flip side of it is anytime you're in an area where you have construction, this has happened, and we've all experienced it. I know you've experienced it. So not by way of an excuse, but by way of apology. I mean, we we wish it's there. They're they're embarrassed to their students. They think they'd have better leasing rates right now. But this city needs this. I mean, I just 30 days ago, I was walking through in my other hat through the dormitories. They're terrible shape. The university has a real housing problem. I thought we were remodeling. It turns out that all we were doing is putting life safety improvements in it. Some of them need to either be and we're going to have to re renovate every one of them. Housing is a problem. It's going to continue to be a problem. And when folks come out and put these large investments, we should thank them for them. And it certainly it's there's going to be enough demand for everybody, that both of rent the landlords here. And they provided an alternative product that frankly, the community needed. So the the alternative motion that I provided to you, I would ask that you consider it and feel free to modify it. But it does a couple of things. One is it says, look, folks, we don't need if you look at the variance, the variance allows the prerogative to you all to set the dollar amount. Odds are, and based upon the information that we've been supplied by Bast or Simons Construction, they're going to get the work done by May 15th. And so to go out and spend money for a bond that's only the security is only good for 30 days, what's the point in it? But also, what's the point in saying, look, you guys are bad guys, and we're going to brand you with a scarlet letter because you didn't hit the security date on on the 15th? What's the point in it? Your leverage is the TCOs on May 30th. That is a strong leverage. That is the D day they have. But our isn't our purpose to get them to finish it? Our purpose wasn't really to send them out and spend more money on the bond. The purpose is say, look, if you you work with us and get this thing done, we're saddened that it's not done by the 15th, but let's get it done by the 30th. That was the D day. That's the drop dead day. So you've got a zero bond there. You will bond for 100% of all the costs not completed on the 30th, but we don't want to wait till we're sitting here on the 30th and get through the same issues. So on the 25th, have the staff say, this is what your bond is. That leaves a couple of days, so that if there is a dispute and we need an arbitrator, you're the arbitrator. We'll come back and deal with you. Unfortunately, that is a work session. I know it's not ideal, but at least you're assembled. I hope I don't think there's going to be a need for you. But if there is, it's there. And in all events, then, on the 30th, that bond must be in place, or you'll enforce it. So I think what it does is and you can adjust the dates. You can come up with a better solution. But it provides an alternative where we're saying, we're working together. We recognize that sometimes things don't work out the way everybody works out it. The objective here is to have the bridge complete no later than May 30th. And to the extent that there's other work that's not completed onsite or offsite, whether it be odd or small things or large things, that those that that work be fully bonded. So just another approach. I really probably stand for questions.
Councillor Hanson?
Thank you, Honored. I I noticed the 25th is Sunday. I would prefer to make it a Friday.
I'll be here Sunday, but Friday would be better.
Staff is probably not.
Yeah, no, no, I I think the Saturday would be better.
And the other thing that, of course, is concerned, the bridge, of course, ties into one concern that the fire department raised a long time ago. And that is that the point only has one access at this point. So combined or connected to the bridge, what needs to be done as early as possible, when the bridge is done, without the bridge is not worth it, is the access up to the point from that side, so that the fire department's concern is allayed of one access with that many people up there in case we have a problem. So that's, I mean, the landscaping is probably a secondary thing. But the one thing that that sticks to my mind is the access. I know they built a sort of a retaining wall there. But behind that retaining wall, there has to be the access completed for that particular development in order to be fire safe, because I can see the city being responsible in case anything, that's not hope it does, but let's hope nothing happens. But in anything ever happens, you know, that we are not in in violation of our own regulation for that many people to have two accesses to that particular area. And that that's a concern. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, the it was made clear to us from the beginning that these folks would not sacrifice safety at all. They can't afford it. They wouldn't do it. To address the fire issue, we did create alternative access. So now you have the paved access. It all goes all the way through. Where you see the road that's goes down to nowhere, it actually doesn't go to nowhere. It goes down to an area that was bladed out and road bases put on it sufficient for the fire trucks to turn around to maneuver. And in addition, we secured and maintained an access over the Clark property, so that behind the wall, you can go back over the Clark property and back around, and then you actually can go through the the Laramie GM property if you wanted. So we have always had two accesses. And that was the directive that we were given, and everyone was that that would not be compromised. There was certainly discussion about how to accomplish that. I certainly I understood at the time that issue was addressed and resolved. When the 30th Street completes, it will be a better approach, and it's a better solution. Now, it is true that at the time that they do the road base there, they will lose. I mean, momentarily, they're going to lose some of that access. But they've also got heavy equipment there. They could move anything through what they want. But we've our directive was that safety would not be ever compromised, and we understood that was addressed, or at least I did. I personally looked at it.
Thank you, Honored. Thank you. Councillor Shamway?
I have a question for Mr. Nicholas. The approval from the city was approved for this project, for the the building, the streets, the bridge. All that was done in 2012. Now, you you gave us some of the the, you know, problems that you Now, you gave us some of the, you know, problems that you ran into, which was water, et cetera, et cetera, you know, and all of the, all of the infrastructure you ran into that was a real concern and all the things you did there. Did Simon have, did Simon cause any of the delays, or is it all just the complications of the fiber optic, the water lines, and all of the water engineering that was, you know, on Spring Creek and things? What, because, you know, if you have, if you have all of the green light to start early in 2013, and then within, within the first page, we're seeing snow on the ground. I know it snows sometimes in May and June, but usually it snows in October. You know, there's many people that have been, you know, have made, you know, life and death mistakes by trying to, you know, travel in Wyoming in October, because that's when things really start hitting hard. What was the biggest delay? Was it the contract with Simon, or was it the, you know, because obviously, you know, they're very experienced in this, and they would look at this project and say, in order to get this complete by October, we're going to have to start, you know, such and such a time. And I see the footings going in at a time, the concrete work being done when it's not prudent for us to do that kind of work in Wyoming. So, I guess I just want to get a sense of why this began so late in the, in the building season in 2013.
Honorable Mayor, you know, I, here's how I would answer that. So, I got involved at the beginning, I think I was in front of you, I guess it'd be, was it a year ago, or, let's see, two years ago?
Yeah, we weren't even on.
Okay, so we were here in the winter.
We weren't even on council.
Yeah, that's, there you go. So, aging myself. So, anyway, here's what I would describe, is that when they started the project, they knew it was going to be an aggressive schedule. And I, Counselor Shumway, I would have told you, there's no way they're going to get it done in that time. And they said, no, this is, we build these in other places, this is what it takes us. Now, I watched the growth, and it's out by my home, it's on my run path, my walk path, I watched it, and I watched them go, and I sort of had an idea of what it would, should take him with labor from Laramie. But I was, and so they hired a local engineer to give them the plans, and they had the bridge plans in, say, the early spring. I was brought, my intention was brought to the bridge at least by early summer. So, by early summer, I was involved with, we got a problem. What I would describe the problem as, is that really was just a failure on their part, if you will, to understand the lack of resources available to address these problems in Wyoming. And also, and part of that is this, suppose you had an updates plan for Spring Creek that was fully up to date, all they'd have to do is go in for two hour, it would take three hours for the engineer to say, we're not changing the elevations, the water flow, bang, you're in there. We hire Western Water. Murray Schroeder comes in and said, look, Phil, the, this should have taken me a week. It's going to take me three months. And I'm suddenly with a friend of mine saying, look, you've got to deliver it faster. They didn't anticipate that. Should the engineer have told them when they were selecting that site, hey, by the way, you've got a three-month process? Maybe they should have. Should the engineer have said, by the way, if you want to put that bridge there, there's three or four utilities, and if you think that you're just going to walk in and do that bridge in three months, you're crazy. It's not going to happen with the red tape, with the federal government, with this, all of that sort of stuff. Then, when you get to Simon's, I would say this, and I had this discussion with them. Their custom, or when, one of the impressive things that occurred to me is that they knew how many labors had to be on that site every day to hit their target. They went out and counted labors every day, and one of the Laramie contractors, the framers, showed up with a team of twelve people. And they said, no, no, our schedule is you have to have forty-five people, we know you have to have forty-five people getting this done. And they said, we don't have forty-five people. Fair enough. They went and they contacted, there's a national firm labor ready, and they went out and they had forty-five people there the next day. So, they've done enough of these, they know how many labors have to be on there, so they could control their rate of construction on the concrete and all the things that they were used to. But when it came to Spring Creek and the hurdles there, they couldn't control it. You could bring all the engineers you wanted in, and they weren't going to get the Corps of Engineers to work any faster. And they weren't going to change the fact that Comcast has a line there, and when you go to Comcast, you say, hey, look, would you, would you move it? You get a big ha-ha, and sure, we'll do it, give us a request, and we'll be there sometime a year from now. And they said, you know, this doesn't happen in larger communities, larger communities, bang, bang, Comcast is out there. And I think that's, when I sit on the Appropriations Committee for the university, we've encountered the same thing. You want to deliver fiber optics. It's a one-year plan, you don't just deliver it in Laramie, Wyoming. You want to deliver these, these things that deal with water, they're long-term. So, that's, what I would say is this, if they, you can't blame it on Simon's, they have a crew this size, and they're trying to do your work, and they're trying to keep that crew busy the entire year. And finally, they said, you've got to bring a crew from out of state. Now, is that in our best interest as a community? No, our best interest in the community is to have a crew this size, a little larger, working twelve months out of the year. Otherwise, your kids can't take those jobs, they can come in and take, you know, for two months and they're gone. So, our contractors are trying to build themselves staffing to keep them busy all year-round, and that wasn't going to work for these large projects. We're going to see more of this as we grow. We, until we hit that threshold where Simon can bring in sixty people to hit a project like this, or they can bring more in, it's just a growing pain, I just think we're going to have. But if, I wouldn't blame it on Simon's, they knew they were going to have it. My folks did not properly understand or evaluate that if they hire Simon's, at some time in that summer, you as the city are going to call for every of their crews to make sure your work is done. And then the school districts is going to say the same. I think they underestimated the task, and these were tasks that you couldn't throw labor on to make it go faster. That's my assessment.
Other questions? Okay, I have a question for staff, but is any other questions for, for Mr. Nicholas? And we can go, we can go back and forth on this if you'd like. The question I have for staff is, if we were to accept, or we were to approve or pass the motion that's suggested by Mr. Nicholas, are we compromising those temporary COs in any way? And I'm not sure, probably the city attorney needs to answer this.
Honorable Mayor, what he's doing is setting security at zero. And the TCOs are in place. The effect is exactly the same. They will stay in place until the twenty, I would suggest the twenty-third, which would be a Friday, in there, but they're still in place until thirty. That, that's the drop dead date on all TCOs. If they get the project completed someplace in there, then they will apply for permanent COs. So, are we in jeopardy? No. The answer is that the TCOs, having not gotten security today, can be terminated unless council decides that you're going to do it. But if you direct staff not to enforce the TCOs for that period of time, you're in exactly the same posture. The problem gets to be is when you set that at zero, you're going to have a whole bunch of other people come in here and say, I want my bond set at zero because I'm unusual. You've got, you've got two sides to this as it goes.
So, so the answer is that we're not compromising those?
We are not compromising the TCOs.
Thank you. Director Hunt?
Mayor and Council, I've read the motion and thought about the logistics here, and I agree with the city attorney. I think we end up in the same place. If progress proceeds as described this evening and previously, then by May thirtieth, we have a finished product. We're at the same endpoint, whether it's this motion or the motion that's been made and is on the floor tonight. I guess I'm thinking of the old philosophical phrase about simplicity where that will do the job is preferable to unnecessary complexity, Aikens razor, the philosophical dictum there. The motion before you actually does not require the interim bond. We've heard applicants make the case that a bond that goes through the motions that would have been made to bring it to you tonight, four weeks or thereabouts before, four to six weeks before the end of the TCO cycle, seems like a lot of work for putting us in the same place. I guess I'm wondering the same question with an added sharpness to the deadline, if we do it a week or so before that May thirtieth deadline. I would suggest to you, as a practical matter, we end up with the same incentive and with the same practical on-the-ground process with the motion before you tonight as with the motion that's been proposed. I would also have to agree with the city attorney, I think we, not a precedent in the legal sense, but we have a precedent in the arena of public opinion in that contractors who are well aware of this project and the mechanisms in place will, for months or years to come, show up and ask, I've got my own weather delays, or I'm dealing with a shortage of crew members, or whatever the case may be. Very legitimate, very similar circumstances perhaps to the ones tonight. If they are in a position of asking for a reduction, or a delay, or a zero bond, I'm not sure how we are in a position to not discuss the same possibilities with them. I think we end up in the same place, we are in a simpler posture in terms of administration and on-the-ground monitoring inspection with the motion before you. If council wishes to substitute this motion or a different direction for us, certainly we'll administer that as you see fit. This is a process, we all are on the same page as far as the end result. The developer would like the project finished, city would like the project finished, citizens would like the project finished. And I've said all along, and will say again tonight, I think in the long run, we will have a project that's viable and worthy of respect in Laramie. Over the long haul, we're not there yet. I think we have a way to get there.
I've got Counselor Vitale and then Counselor Shumway.
I'd like to make just a comment, then I'd like to move this motion. Is the twenty-third acceptable on this? Well, the comment is, I think if we look at construction projects, we look at the Cyrus Park, that got started about a year and a half after it was supposed to be completed. There's no security bonds or anything on that project. I think these things have to be evaluated individually, because there are individual circumstances that may seem critical to the person doing it at the time, but may not be critical in the eyes of the council or staff or so forth. So, I, I don't think this is precedent-setting, I think there are a lot of unusual circumstances that occurred out there that weren't foreseen, and had they been, we wouldn't be here talking about it tonight. So, I, this would be an amendment to the motion, we have a motion on the floor.
I think it would be an amendment by substitution?
That'd be the easiest way to do it.
Amendment by substitution. I would move to substitute the following, that the amount of the delayed improvement security be zero until May twenty-third, when city staff are directed to calculate the amount of security required based upon the amount of outstanding or incomplete onsite or offsite improvements as of that date. If appropriate, the staff may account for work which will be completed between May twenty-third and May thirtieth. The final security amount shall be based upon that amount or such amount as the city council may establish at its public work session on May twenty-seventh. The final bond shall be received by the city council, not later than May thirtieth, 2014.
Okay, is there a second for that motion?
I second it.
There's a second by Counselor Hanson. Now, discussion on the motion. Counselor Shumway?
Your Honor, I, I'm going to vote no on this substituted motion, and then that would bring it back to the original motion. The reason for doing that is, first of all, we'd have to set a special meeting, we do not have, we have a work session on the twenty-seventh, we could set a special meeting, we don't have one right now. It seems to be, it's much simpler for our staff to work with the motion that's on, that was on the floor. They don't have to deal with all the new dates, the new bond requirements and all of that. Ours, the way it was initially presented in the motion that I made is that we have a drop dead date on May thirtieth, and we're done with it. This one adds a lot of new requirements to the staff, to the point, and also to all of the, those that are involved in this project. I see this, I see a very similar result at the end of the month of May. And this one just, to me, makes it much more difficult to manage. And so, I'm going to vote no on the substitution, and hopefully, that'll bring back the original motion, we can vote on that.
Thank you. Counselor Hanson?
The attraction of the motion that is being presented by Mr. Nicholas, to my mind, is that we have a bond set before the thirtieth on the amount that's left to be completed at that time. And I think there's a certain attraction to that, that we, a bird in the hand is better than under the roof, that we have some security at hand at that point, because it will be calculated as of the twenty-fifth, and needs to be submitted at that point. The way I understand that, unless I misunderstand it. The other thing, well, let me hold up on the other thing. Thank you.
Other counselors' comments? Let me open it up to the public, and we can come back to the council if you have any further comments. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this? Yes, Mr. Hale?
I hope the council seriously considers the ramifications of a lack of bond or security before you vote on this. And I think this is a classic case of the cart before the horse, because it's my understanding that the intention was to have this bridge and the necessary roadway and so forth to offer a second method, as Counselor Hanson had suggested or stated, of safety issues for this place. Now, most businesses that have restrictions on them, and before they can get into business and start collecting revenue, they have to have every I dotted and every T crossed and inspections, and everything has to be completed. It doesn't seem to be the case with the point. Currently, they're collecting revenue. So, they're in business, and we've heard, and this really concerns me, we've heard from Mr. Nicholas that there's some sort of securitas route for the fire trucks to get there in the event that they need a second route. I'm not aware that Mr. Nicholas has, in his possession or has delivered to the council, a letter stating from the fire chief that he's looked into this matter, and everything is hunky-dory, and he's willing to accept those responsibilities, and they've looked it over, and that mitigates the current problem. And unless you have that sort of letter, I think the city is biting off a chunk of liability that they may not want to get into. Secondly, this area in question is not the first place that's had a high Secondly, this area in question is not the first place that's had a high water table. There's plenty of contractors that have had to deal with high water tables. And the fact that, that they came in there and, I mean, Spring Creek was not covered over with camo netting. They knew it was there. And they had all their people, anybody could look at it, they knew where the footings were going to go, they knew about the bridge, and if they couldn't anticipate a high water table, then to me, they're incompetent. And so those are things that happen. There's plenty of contractors that have to deal with winter conditions. It's not just this location. And the rest of us seem to be able to survive somewhat. And I recall one time, the city had made a mistake in some work that I was doing, and the city's records were not correct. And it essentially cost me a lot of labor and materials to rectify that. I went to the Public Works Director at the time, and I explained the problem, that this was an error that the city made, and it just magnified. And I was told tough, this is it, and I ate the whole cost of it. Now, certainly it wasn't, it was small potatoes compared to what the point is into. I don't have the kind of finances that the point has. And, and I think it does set a precedence when you start deciding, well, we're just going to put this to zero, or we're going to wipe the slate clean. It's called good business. And when you get a, a security deposit, it provides an incentive for people to do what they say they're going to do. And I recall being here at the city council meeting one time, and there was an attorney representing Well Dog. I believe his name was Mr. Nicholas. And he, he was up here, and he was talking about all the excuses and the things, why Well Dog didn't do what they said they were going to do, and a number of things. And how many times have we heard about, "It's going to be high tech, we're going to hire so many employees, we're going to do this, we're going to do that." And at oh dark 30, the company's out of business, they've gone. We had bus companies, we have all kinds of things. Was there a security deposit involved in any of those people? No. So I, I think it's a tough road that the city has to learn. And it's not to say that the management of the point are going to leave at oh dark 30 and leave a mess up there. It's called good business. And so I think it should be considered and looked into that, just as a point where other contractors can't come in and say, "Well, you know, we've really had some bad weather and a number of things." And I'd like that same consideration. Once you start watering it down, then it looks like it's very selective. And I don't know if the city wants to be, have that reputation. Actually, I think they do have that reputation for being very selective. Is that a reputation that you want? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to comment? Any further comments from council? Yes.
Thank you, Your Honor. The, I'm concerned about, you know, the precedent we, I'm sorry, were you first?
No, 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 you're first.
The precedent we're setting. However, I think what, what we could point out to, to any other contractors, did you have a bridge to build? I mean, that's a, that's a major project. I know they committed themselves to that, and that was part of their commitment. This was something we couldn't get done on our own. And that, I think, does constitute a mitigating circumstance. Is it an excuse? No. But it is a mitigating circumstance that changes the situation in some fashion. And I realize, I did know that beforehand, the problems that have been run into in building that bridge was there. I mean, that came up later. Some of that, nobody knew that some lines were there, the water lines and whatever. So there are some mitigating circumstances. I would agree with Counselor Vitale on that.
I had Counselor Henry, then Counselor Somerville.
Okay, so I'm going, not going to be in favor of this motion, and I, I do believe that the developer was aware of the financial security deposit for a very long time, and they shouldn't be, have been waiting this long anyway. I don't know. That, I just, I don't feel very much sympathy. Sorry.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Somerville?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just need a clarification from city staff. On May 30th, if we are looking at things that still haven't been done, and we do not, and we go with the original motion that's laid here before, what are the city's options in recouping that money? I know that the, the temporary occupancy certificates won't expire, and we won't issue permanent ones, but what is the mechanisms for recouping the money that we're going to have to spend to pick up and go complete that project?
Mayor and Councilmember Somerville, if no security is provided and the work remains undone, then in effect, it would be left to the city to complete that work. That's really the only option I see, unless maybe the property were to come under a separate ownership and that owner would complete those offsite public improvements. And I'd invite Dave to weigh in if he sees other options.
There is another option, and that's that we could put a lien on the property that is there. That would take court action to get it completed. It takes, it's a short period of time. But you have to understand that there will be a bond that will be required for the after market, after the project is completed, the warranty period, they will have a bond that's in place there before they get a permanent certificate of occupancy. That is going to be in place regardless. That's why I did not address it in the motion that was there. But the permanent CO is what we really have for our threat of action, that they could not have anybody in the premise if they don't get the permanent COs. With the temporaries expiring on the 30th, they're going to be looking at the 30th to get the permanence, and they will have those bonds in place. That's why they're willing to do today is to identify the 30th as the date, drop dead date, because they're going to have to have those in place anyway, and that's fine. The bonds will be there for the warranty work as it goes, but that's a much reduced number. All that we're looking for right now, and what makes sense, is to get this project finished. At the end of it, there will be a bond in place so they can continue renting the facilities for the students as it goes through for the next year. We know that's going to take place.
How long does it usually take to issue permanent occupancy certificates? I know we're looking at a May 30th completion date, but is it more realistic to think that they're going to have to have stuff done by the 20th?
No, no.
Or the 25th?
How long they would take to process that?
It's dependent on scheduling of final inspections. That's the only variable that, it can be done with 24 hours notice.
Okay.
With public works inspections for specialty items, I'd suggest perhaps a day ahead of that. But yes, it's not a week-long process. What actually happens at the end is the certificates are literally computer-generated in our office. That's a matter of over the counter and handed off as a matter of request once those inspections are done. So the inspection itself and scheduling thereof is the only thing that takes time, and even there, we're only talking a day or two perhaps.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Honorable Mayor, if I may clarify my. There's a contract between the city and the point that they have to complete that work. So they're obliged to complete it under contract. So what's being discussed here is whether or not the, they're, they need to go out and acquire a security by either a bonding company, or you could get a letter of credit from the bank to guarantee their performance, when it's only going to be effective for 30 days. Because either one of two things has to happen. Either one, they don't get it done by May 30th, in which case they have to bond it anyway. Or two, they complete the work, and that lowers the cost of the bond. So what they're banking on is the notion that they will complete the work before May 30th, and they will save the expense of paying for that security. But in any event, you, as pointed out, you have a lien against the property, you sue them for it, and they've got plenty of assets out there to pay for that. So that's not the issue. So the, it's simply saying, and it comes back to discussion we had with staff this morning, that is, do you gain a, any leverage on them on account of them paying for the bond? And the answer is no. All you do is they, they incur an expense that, that's, provides security for 30 days, that you still have all your leverage on the TCOs, you have the contract, and you're going to get the bonds if the work is not completed by the 30th.
Thank you. I think that, I just want to say, I'm not in favor of the substitution motion. I think I'd rather see this just kept simple for the city staff, and we're going to end up in the same place in six weeks, given those clarifications. We're going to end up in the same place in six weeks, and hopefully that's a completed project.
Thank you. Director Hunt?
Mayor and council, I need to correct what may be a misperception here. The May 30th date has no bonding capability other than the warranty bond associated with it after that fact. That is truly a drop dead date. It's the date at which the, by virtue of the variance having established that date, the temporary certificates of occupancy will expire regardless of bonding. There is a warranty bond, and so in that specific sense of the city holding a security, there is a, there's a financial holding that will be with us for one year. That is for the purpose of making sure that if there are hidden defects, if we have a contrary poor mistake that no one was able to catch, that there'll be money available to repair it. But there is no mechanism available to this council or to the staff to provide for a security for undone work after May 30th. There is only one instrument that could change that, and that is another variance by board of adjustment. I throw that out for what it's worth.
Thank you. Counselor Shumway?
And if I may, one other clarification. Items for review for the onsite improvements are not part of the discussion. Those we would also want to address, but that would be an administrative process. Those are things such as landscaping onsite, that there's, there's a bit yet to be done, some detention basin work and so forth. Those are financially rather minor in the scheme of things, but just so you all have the whole picture, that would be an element separate from what we're talking about tonight, but would also need to be done by May 30th.
Counselor Shumway?
A question, I think for our attorney. Should we reach the 30th and go beyond that? And then there is a lien placed on the property. Can this lien be satisfied with the assets of the corporation, or does it have to be satisfied by the sale of the property?
It can, it can be, the lien could be foreclosed, and what you do is foreclose a lien. You do not just go get a judgment. The other alternative to the lien is decision for breach of contract, and then you get a judgment, then you can satisfy it out of the assets of the corporation. But the lien would foreclose the property. The bank has a prior lien to that one as it goes through, although there is some question in Wyoming law as to priorities of liens on these kinds of municipal projects.
And how long do we have legally to satisfy the lien before it expires?
Once you file the lien, you have to foreclose it within a six-month period of time. Once the foreclosure has taken place, it happens with that process.
Six months.
It's a six-month.
Okay.
Counselor Hanson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Now I have a question, I guess, there are three lawyers now, including Mr. Hunt. The statement that Mr. Nicholas suggests the final security amount shall be based upon the amount of work to establish at its May 27th session. So there's a suggestion that there will be a, a bond set before the 30th for an amount that needs to be paid. Now, is that according to what Mr. Hunt just said invalid, because we cannot set it without the board of adjustment? Or is this binding what Mr. Nicholas said? That, I'm confused now. And I guess Mr. Nicholas, or you can answer this one.
I'll, I'll give it a shot, Mayor and Counselor Hanson. And first of all, I should clarify that I am not an attorney, and I hope I.
Didn't come across as such, no.
Okay.
But you offered a legal opinion here.
I, I'll, I'll move on. As I understand the motion, what it would, as proposed, what would be affected by that is a bond for a period of about a week. After that, it would have to be resolved by completion of the project, or at that point, that bond, whatever amount it may be, and whatever work undone it may be attached to, the city would be obliged to call and perform the work, or cause the work to be performed ourselves. So the bond itself, if submitted before in proper form, would survive as a financial amount. It's just that all the work would have to be completed by that point. There would be no opportunity for new bonding or additional bonding for anything that was determined to be incomplete as of the May 30th. We would only have recourse to what we held at that point. And then there's a separate matter of the security for warranty one-year period.
But the bond would stay in place for anything that's not completed?
Until.
Because it has established, it's established beforehand, right?
Until such time as the work would be completed.
Yeah, okay.
As I understand.
Mr. Nicholas?
I don't think we're that far off. I hadn't given thought, and I understand the distinction with respect to, in the event that the elements were not required, Matt, suppose we go into a deep freeze for a month and they can't get the asphalt plant up. It may be, and I have not thought far enough ahead to know whether they'd have to go back for an extension through the variance process. That may be the case. I'm not disagreeing with that. The distinction with respect to the bond and the security is, is that we have in place a contract, the delayed improvement agreement, which provides that if we don't complete the work in two years, then you go against the bond, so you do not have to, you forego this. I think so. What, the bond would not be in effect for one week. It would be effective until all the improvements described in the delayed improvement agreement are completed, because what you're doing is bonding your performance of that agreement.
Okay. Counselor Pierce?
Mr. Mayor and Counselor, if I could respond by way of clarification, I think we are on the same page there. The financial dollar and cents does survive the May 30th deadline to the extent that it's needed to.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Pierce?
Yeah, I just have a, a pretty brief comment, you know, aside from the fact that this is a mess, you know, and it, I mean, truly a mess. We've been told that this particular developer has plenty of assets, yet no security. So it, it appears to me that there's a, a conflict here, right? That's all I'm going to say.
Let me, if I may address that. Let me give an example. I mean, you understand this as well. I'll give you, Serra Sky is an example. So you went out and you set a budget for Serra Sky, and you applied for the Business Ready Community Grant. And suppose that project runs out of gas, or you get a cost overrun. Now, the city has at its disposal a general fund. You have at its, your disposal enterprise funds. And at any given time, you could reach into your pocket and say, "We're just going to pay that." And it'd be true for any projects. But when you went into work with respect to the Serra Sky, you said, and I'm sure you said this, I don't know if you physically said this, but you would have said, "That project has to stand on its own. It cannot look to us for our general fund." And this is true for, I represent companies that are business. The cement plant, for example, I won't use them. Any, any business you have that's owned by a, a. by a large company, they have the resources at a given time, but when they go out to budget projects to make, as businesses do, they budget those projects to live on their own, and they have to, project by project, stand on their own. Now, in addition, each project's a little different, so this project has some investors that are not involved in other projects. Now, they have among themselves agreements as to pull out of the project. So, in the end of the day, what I would say is, this is true, that what we're really talking about is providing these folks the opportunity to avoid a cost of 2% that they should put into construction instead of paying the security that really is not, is going to do you very little gain, you're going to get the work done. So, I understand what you're saying, and I understand it seems like a conflict, but we do this all the time. But I would just say that the city is no different. You make every project stand on its own, and one project doesn't, you don't just pull out of your pocket because one, if that project on Sierra Sky starts running out of gas, it runs out of gas. You got to go find more resources, but you don't just generally say, "Well, we have somebody else's money to fill the gap."
Okay, thank you. Jane, or Counselor Pierce?
I actually think we did pull out of our pocket tonight, which was the Indian Hills $330,000, and the change orders. So, the bridge goes both ways, and in this case, it goes nowhere, but...
Well, understand, they are pulling out of their pocket, they're $800,000 over budget. They're pulling out of their project, believe me.
Let's not, let's not go back and forth, because we'll, it'll turn into a debate. I've got just a few things to say. Speaking to the motion, I look at the motion that's on the floor, and I look at the motion that's proposed by staff, and in my mind, they achieve the same thing. We, a lot of talk about the bond, neither one addresses the bond, we're not going to get a bond between now and, between now and May, no matter what we decide to do tonight. My priority is to get that bridge built, with the developer building it, and not use city funds or our community funds to build it. I appreciate all the challenges that were involved. When I look at what's the motion that's on the floor, it's not quite as, there's some differences, either one in my mind works, okay? I do like, it is laid out as far as what they're willing to do, as far as they believe they'll get the project done by the 25th of May. If they don't get it done by the 25th of May, they've stated that they will, they will accept what the city and our community decides it's going to cost to finish that project. If it runs a few extra days late, that bond will be in place by the 30th. If that bond is not placed by the 30th, we still have the leverage of those temporary COs, and we can decide at that point in time what to do with them. Even if we, no matter what happens, the fact, we're not going to, we're not going to take away those temporary COs now, because we've got students in there, in these projects, in this housing. We're not going to, we're not going to ask people to leave in the middle of a semester, if you will. So I think either one works, I don't see a lot of difference between the two. I'm willing to support Senator, Mr. Nicholas's suggestion, but frankly, if it does not pass, I think, I think the one that we have by the city will work also. Having said that, are there any more quick comments from counsel before we call it to a vote? City Clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Can we clarify what we're voting on?
This is a substitute.
The substitute amendment, that you seconded, and Counselor Vitale?
Wasn't there a date change to the 23rd instead of the 25th?
Right.
He mentioned that.
Okay.
Your Honor, clarify, will be completed between May 23rd and 30th? Changing that 25th?
Yes, the 25th has been changed to the 23rd.
Do we need to make a change to, or I guess that would be done, would make that work session a special meeting with a different motion?
That would, that would be something we can, we can do, and if, in fact, we needed to do that.
Yep.
All right, City Clerk, roll call, please.
Vitale?
Yes.
Henry?
No.
Shumway?
No.
Yes.
Kemper?
No.
No.
Pierce?
No.
Weaver absent. Polikas?
Yes.
Five noes, three yeses, one absent.
Okay, so that motion fails. We're back to the original motion, which was, which was presented by Counselor Somerville.
Shumway.
Excuse me, Counselor Shumway. Call the question.
Then we have to vote on it.
I'm not sure you have to, but if you'd like to, you may.
Well, we'd be...
I think we're there. Would you like to call the question? All right, there's a vote, there's a call for the question, so there'll be a vote on the question to stop all debate and, and call for a vote on the motion. So this votes on, on the question?
To stop debate.
To stop debate. I believe it requires a two-thirds, which would be six votes.
Who's your second, John?
Who's the second on the question?
I'll second.
There it is, right there. Counselor Henry. So, roll call on the question.
Hanson?
No.
Henry?
Yes.
Kemper?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
Vitale?
No.
Weaver absent. Polikas?
Yes.
Six yeses, two noes, one absent, Your Honor.
So that motion carries. So...
I want to just say, it's a fair solution, it'll work, and we'll work with you, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholas. So this is a roll call, roll call on the, on the, on the first motion of the main motion.
Your Honor, who was the second? Shumway made the motion.
The main motion?
I think it was...
Counselor, Counselor Kemper, after a long pause.
Thank you. A very, a very long pause.
It's on your main motion, Your Honor.
Yes.
Can we still discuss that?
We cannot discuss.
This is a question.
Question's been called.
Shumway?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
Henry?
No.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kemper?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Vitale?
No.
Weaver absent. Polikas?
Yes.
Six yeses, two noes, one absent.
So the motion carries. Item number 13, Counselor Vitale.
I move that counsel approves Resolution 2014-27, appointing Brian A. Lee Legambri to the Planning Commission to fulfill a term expiring October 31st, 2015, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion, a second by Counselor Somerville. Discussion on the motion by staff, or by counsel? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this topic? City Clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Vitale?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Kemper?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Weaver absent. Polikas?
Yes.
Eight yeses, one absent, Your Honor.
Okay, that motion carries. Onto item number 14, which is consideration of future council work session topics. Does anybody have a work session topic? Counselor Shumway?
I'd like to, I have one topic that I'd like to have a work session on, and that is the possibility of investigating the effects of e-cigarettes, the secondhand smoke or vapors from that, to be included in our no-smoking ordinance.
Good idea.
Oh, good idea.
Okay, is there, is there other support on counsel for that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll include that as a work session sometime in the future.
Very good.
All right, any, any other topics? And why don't we move to the next item on the agenda, which is item number 15, which is public comments? Okay, I have three people on here, Joe Vitale, Marion Griffin, who I don't believe is here tonight, and Tim Hale. So Counselor Vitale, you are first up, would you like to make, I believe you would like to make a motion?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to move to suspend the rules in the public comment section of the Code of Conduct. That addresses the five-minute limit, and also, council members shall not participate as members of the public in the public comment periods for the purpose of making a public service announcement.
Okay, is there a second on that motion?
Seconded.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Counselor Shumway?
Your Honor, I'm not going to support this, and the reason is because we have a perfect place for this discussion, this comment that comes from the council, it's called Council Comments during our work sessions, and it's adequate, and it's reasonable, and it's one that we have set aside for this so that we can accomplish that. I think we're changing the scope of the public comments by making this a part of our council business, and I think it should stay where it's been designed to stay, and so I'm going to vote no on, on this motion to, to make an exception.
Any other, Counselor Vitale?
Well, this is, this goes to very serious council business, and I think it deserves to be presented when some of the public is still up and paying attention, because it goes to their interest. That doesn't occur at work sessions, and this is a special request, and I think, I think I deserve to go to that stewardship word behind you, to be able to represent my constituents and their interests.
So, may I ask you a question?
Sure.
So, if I interpret this right, you're, you wanted to speak as a council person?
No, I'm speaking as a member of the public. Well, I would be speaking, yeah, as a member of the public, if you, you are, this thing denies me as a public member to speak.
Okay, but you just...
Because it says a council member cannot speak as a member of the public. That's why I'm asking to...
No, I just wanted to know if you're speaking on, as a council member, as, or as a member of the, of the public?
I'll be speaking as, representing myself, that was...
Any, anything else from counsel? City Clerk, would you do roll call, please? This is a suspension of the rules, it does require two-thirds vote, which would be six votes in the positive. Okay?
It's a two-part motion, Your Honor. The five minutes and the council member speaking.
I, he made it all as one motion.
Right, there's, there's two items within this one motion.
So if you're voting for this, you're voting for both those parts.
One doesn't work without the other, that's why I made it singular.
Okay.
Vitale?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pierce?
No.
Weaver absent. Henry?
No.
Kemper?
No.
Shumway?
No.
Somerville?
Yes.
Polikas?
No.
Five noes, three yeses, one absent.
Okay, so the motion fails.
And that's a real disservice to this community.
Counsel Vitale, you're out of order.
No, I'm not out of order, Mayor.
Yes, you are.
This council is out of order.
Counsel Vitale?
Yeah. Tell me I'm out of order, I've done everything right. It's hard to overcome the prejudice and discrimination.
I think we got a point of order.
Don't worry about the point of order.
We got a point of order, Counsel Vitale, and you're out.
Well, you're out of order yourself.
All right, onto the next item.
We still have one, one person, no, it's a council member.
Okay, so the next, next person on the list is Marion Griffin, I do not believe she's here tonight, and the last person on the list is Mr. Hale.
I'd like to read a newspaper article that was recently published. It goes on to say, "A Cozville man will spend a month in jail, pay more than $3,000 in fines, court costs, and restitution, and be prohibited from owning any companion animal after district court judge found him guilty of animal cruelty charges. Judge Robert H. Downer Jr. convicted Eric F. Johnson on Wednesday of one count of animal abuse and two counts of depriving animals of food and water. He'd been found guilty of animal cruelty for similar actions in 2006. Ms. Klavik testified that she was among neighbors who called Animal Control January 7th when she saw Johnson's three dogs tethered in a backyard in temperatures estimated by witnesses to be in their teens. The polar vortex was coming, and I was concerned about the dogs being outside." An animal control officer testified. Animal Control Officer L. Krickenberg testified that when he arrived at around 11:30 a.m., the dogs did not have food or shelter, and the bowl, and one bowl of water in the yard had frozen over. One of the dogs, Precious, was pregnant. Tickles, a seven-month-old puppy without a collar, was tied by the neck to a tree stump with a short matted chain too short to allow free movement." It goes on to say, officer sees the animals, took them to the prevention of the cruelty to animals. The Christian Scheller, SPCA's vet who treated the animals, Tickles was considered healthy, but thin, you shouldn't be able to see a dog's ribs, she told the court. Scheller said it would be difficult to estimate how long the dogs would need to be exposed to the cold weather before dying of hypothermia, but estimated it would require several days of being in the elements. She said that Precious puppies would have died in the cold had the pregnant dog well outside in those temperatures. It goes on to say that the Judge Downer's order that Johnson not possess any companion animals, and that's really basically about it. It seems that this community had a little different idea on what their morals were and scruples relative to animal cruelty, and it also certainly appeared that the prosecuting attorney allowed a lot of testimony and allowed evidence to demonstrate to the judge that this was a serious problem. Now, why do I bring this up? Well, you know, we certainly have been under the limelight about the animal, recent animal cruelty, and where the judge was not aware of all the extenuating circumstances surrounding this. We've heard at a work session, Chief Stalder stating that he'd have to retrain 51 officers, and it just went on, and it's a complex system, and how did the procedures fail, and so forth. But regardless of pathology reports, and were they timely, and you didn't know that the defendant was going to plead guilty, and all the sort of excuses that we heard, bottom line is, any competent prosecutor, all he has to say is, "Your Honor, the defendant has pled guilty, obviously, we have, we don't have all the charging documents, I recommend that we postpone sentencing until such time we get those documents." You'll never find a judge that'll say, "No, I'm going to go ahead." That's all it took. And then when the rest of these documents came in, and the city attorney could then familiarize with it... familiarize with, himself with it, and determine the gravity, and express the gravity of this to the presiding judge with a reasonable sentence that would follow, but no, it didn't happen. And why didn't it happen? Because we've got a city attorney that just wants to process things through, do it the easy way, and that's certainly how it happened. I'd also like to point out to you, last Thursday was the culmination of my $10 parking ticket. I have appeared before Judge Peterson on this same item four times. I've attended this court, municipal court, three times in which Mr. Clark was present, three times in which he's objected to virtually everything that I've ever done in respect to the court. And Mr. Clark's only witness, city employee, was not prepared, and failed very miserably, and Mr. Clark had to request a dismissal. So, you've got all the court's time, you've got Mr. Clark's time, he never prepared his witness, it would've took him a minute to just run through the basic facts, and if there was any dispute with his witness, before he even proceeded. He did not do that. And I think this, this Counsel should look into getting a city attorney that takes his job serious, and doesn't use and waste the court's time for personal vendettas. I'm also disappointed in this Counsel not supporting Counselor Vitale in what he wanted to describe and state further tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Counselor Hanson.
I move that Counsel adjourned, end of second.
There's a motion and a second by Counselor Shumway. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned.
I'd like this in the, in the record, too, please.
Sue, you have enough copies? Can I keep this?
I'll give it.
First vendetta is...
It's not so bad.
Ten more?
No, it's not so bad. I don't... Have a good night, sir.
Can we do this tomorrow? Yes, I could. I have a limit as to how much I can listen to today.
That's from Mr. Hale.